I know, you're gonna love it. You're gonna love it.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Oh, good. Because I was gonna say, I think I had one of those for like two years ago.
It has been a little longer.
A year and a half ago last fall before this past one. And I've never gotten the vision or not on whatever. I didn't get it like I had the last couple of years.
Oh, okay. I can help you.
We'll see.
I'm sorry, because I.
We're gonna get started in about a minute here.
But PowerPoint.
Oh, all right. I don't know how to do that. Okay, all right. I can't help you with that.
Because I can't see my notes. Um, yeah, I think that's okay. It's like my header.
It was.
It was on the top. Yeah.
It was nice. It was nice. Yes.
Um, tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, okay. It was pretty cool.
But it looks pretty cool.
I was gonna say, I noticed that when I was getting my.
You're not a werewolf, are you?
Yes.
Yes, we're gonna find out.
Not her me. All right, I'm gonna call the ga- call to order this study session of Monday, February 10th. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we always do, we'll begin this meeting by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have stewed at this land through the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in upholding this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. This is just a study session today, so no action will be taken. And I'll go ahead and give it to Benjamin D., the roll call, and take it from there.
Yes, good evening. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Stanley.
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell.
Here.
Commissioner Werner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson and Mayor Shamro.
Here. And with that, we'll move to any announcements from the city manager.
Good evening. I just have one announcement. We've gotten some preliminary results from the strategic planning survey for the community. We're almost to eight hundred and thirty responses. We're hoping for a thousand. So this is a friendly reminder that get those responses in by the fourteenth. And our strategic planning representative, David Burely, will also be here on Tuesday to speak to the meeting. And we have our focus groups on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. So please sign up if you are interested. Thank you.
Thank you. And any announcements from the city clerk?
Yes, I've got meetings to announce for this week, the week of February 10th, 2025. The Complete Streets Ad-Hoc Committee is meeting on Wednesday, February 12th. That's at 10:00 a.m. in the committee room on the second floor of the governmental center. The Brown Bridge Trust Fund Ad-Hoc Committee is also meeting on Wednesday, February 12th. That's at 11:15 a.m. in the second floor committee room, again, in the governmental center. And then the Downtown Development Authority's Finance Committee is meeting this Friday, February 14th. That's at 8:30 a.m. also in the second floor committee room of the governmental center. And then just a reminder that the city commission's next regular meeting is Tuesday of next week. So Tuesday, February 18th, as city offices are closed on Monday, February 17th for President's Day. We are recruiting for a number of different boards and committees, including the Board of Tax Review, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Arts Commission, and Traverse City Light and Power. Anyone interested in those seats, we encourage to contact the city clerk's office for information on them, as well as how to apply. And then just some community updates. Just wanted to remind the public that now through February 28th, the Brown Bridge Ad-Hoc Trust Fund Committee, excuse me, Brown Bridge Trust Fund Ad-Hoc Committee of the city commission is seeking public input regarding improvements to city parks and access to city parks that they might want to see as a potential funding opportunities for consideration by the electorate potentially this November. So again, looking for that input and the survey can be found on the city's website under the news section. And then just the usual reminder for everyone sitting up here to please speak directly into your microphones. And that's all that I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that and for the reminder about next week, because I myself had forgotten. So moving on, we'll start a topic, first topic of discussion today, which is water and sewer rates. And Liz, I'll have you kick it off.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. Yep, we are here for part two of the water and sewer rate discussion, which is a review of metering and overall policies and practices. I'd like to welcome Jana Robinson, the Deputy Treasurer slash Finance Director, to the podium and take it away.
Thank you, Liz. Sorry, I don't know. It sounds so quiet over here. You guys can hear me? Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you guys all for coming back again. I know the last one was a little bit lengthy. So this is slide one of twenty-one slides tonight. So feel free to ask questions, but I just wanted to give you guys a little link on there. I know you guys had the packet, but I'm gonna try to cruise through these and answer your questions. So before I start, I just also wanted to thank the utility billing office or the utility billing staff in the treasurer's office for their contributions and the water sewer team for their collaboration and patience and assistance in understanding this information to be able to make informed proposals. So I'm gonna start tonight with a summary of the last presentation and address some questions stemming from the last presentation. Then we're gonna shift gears a little bit from water suing sewer rates to review irrigation billing practices and rates, metering practices, and provide recommendations for future policies and practices. So this, this was, this is just a summary of last time. And a short recap, in part one, we proposed a different water sewer rate change approach with the goals of recapturing costs in alignment with industry standards, equity, and conservation. With these goals in mind, we covered water and sewer, residential and commercial rates for in-city customers. The proposal was to change our approach from a monthly base rate that included six CCF of usage to a ready-to-serv fee that captures the cost of operational expenditures, less customer service costs. We also proposed to charge for all usage at a constant consumption cost for all commercial customers. For residential customers, we proposed a discounted rate for the first four CCF, because that was at or above usage for most of our residential customers. And then all residential usage over four CCF would be charged at the same rate as commercial customers. And I'm sorry, my, my mouse is over there. I used to have a touchscreen. There we go. Okay. So then, before we move on, I also wanted to reiterate that the example rates that were used in part one of the presentation were not the proposed rates for the upcoming fiscal year '25, '26. Rather, those were just example rates creating the fiscal year '24, '25 budget. And so it was used to show if we proposed the change in this year and we implemented it, this is how, this is how it would have impacted fiscal year '24, '25. So if the commission agrees to the proposed method, we would provide rate comparisons for fiscal year '25, '26 using the old rate or the old approach and the new approach. Does anybody have questions before we move on from the summary? That's a lot for, that was basically all part one, though, in one slide.
Good job with that. That was a hefty meeting to summarize in one slide, so thank you.
Then we'll go into out-of-city customer rates. We did not cover these in the last session, but after the meeting, we had some questions from out-of-city customers. So the out-of-city customers comprise about 2.4% of customers served. Currently, they're charged at a rate of 1.5 times the base rate of in-city customers. So that was due to agreements made with the townships. Because these customers are non-annexed, they, and they don't need to pay city taxes, they pay in a premium rate to use city services. So we're not proposing to change the current out-of-city customer rates, but we are open to suggestions on other potential approaches. Does anybody have anything before we move forward on those? I wanted to address it because we did have some outreach. Oh, one, sorry.
I have to admit that I used some, I got some hope on this for these questions. And the question is whether that higher rate fully covers the associated administrative costs.
And so the administrative costs, in the first slide deck that we released, I included the administrative costs in there. But for out-of-city customers, we are already capturing the administrative costs in the city enterprise fee that we capture from the water sewer plant from the city. So that does cover the administrative costs, but it is an external, an outside of a city customer using a city service, so we're not charging them city customer rates. If they were annexed, then they would be charged the same rate as the customers, but they'd pay city taxes. Because they're non-annexed, they pay the premium rate to use a city service. All right, then, we're going, sorry, these are kind of all over the place, just in response to questions. So a little bit all over the place right now. But the next slide is about the solar credit. So it was in response to the commission approval of the solar energy storage system project in December. Jacobs provided us with the estimate of $100,000 a year in utility energy savings. In the initial presentation, though, if you're looking at my slides on the screen, they're going to differ because I applied the reduction to the water ready-to-serv fees. This is the wastewater treatment plant. It should have been applied to the ready sewer ready-to-serv fees. So in the scenario on my presentation up here, I think before it was like 4.2% decrease because the, the water rates are less than the sewer. But this is the actual reduction. It's the sewer to ready-to-serv fee, which could reduce, be decreased by about 2.8% or about $1.09 per customer per month for in-city residents if we saw a $100,000 reduction in operating expenses. Yeah.
To me, the electricity usage at the wastewater treatment plant is part of the cost of operation, not fixed cost. So I would think that the $100,000 wouldn't be applied to the ready-to-serv fee, but to the rate.
So the ready-to-serv fee is the, the cost of operating. It's the operational expenditures less the customer service fee. That's what it covers right now. Like day-to-day operations is what the ready-to-serv fee costs. So the cost for us to be ready to serve you guys, that's the, what we tried to comprise the ready-to-serv fee with. It is just straight operational expenditures less the customer service fee.
I guess I'm completely upside down then, because from your last presentation, to me, the ready-to-serv fee, whether it was water or wastewater, was essentially the fixed costs for, like, for a business, the fixed costs. And then depending on how much, say, I use at my home, then that's the variable cost. So I had fixed costs and variable costs. The fixed cost, doesn't matter if I use any or not, and then the variable cost is what I use. And so to me, utilities are, they depend on how much is done, whether it's at the water treatment plant or the wastewater treatment plant. And so they should, again, to me, be associated with the variable costs, not the fixed costs.
But we have to pay electricity to run our plant, whether you're here or not. And so that was, that was included in the operational costs. So is, the utilities were included. Like, we have to pay to run the plant, whether it, zero is used or.
Yeah, but the plant has to do more if we're using it more.
And so operational expenditures are budgeted to reflect the changes.
I mean, if anything, the utilities, then you could tell me, okay, 40% of the utilities are fixed cost and 60% or anything above this amount is a variable cost. But I'm not comfortable with saying that our utilities are independent of what, how much we do there.
So it's not, so we, it's what we have budgeted in operational expenditures for the year. So that variability is intended to be included in that budgeted amount. So that, that fixed operational expenditure, because that's, right now, what we're doing is we're saying $16 is fixed across the board with the inclusion of six CCF. That $16, though, is arbitrary. It doesn't have any basis, like financially. It's just $16 is our base rate. We increase it or we decrease it based on how much we're gonna capture in the base rate. What should we make the consumption rate? How much do we need to recapture in consumption revenue?
Well, I guess to that point, then, I don't, I'm not comfortable with it being arbitrary. I want it to be associated with what does it cost to turn, to have the plant ready, actually ready to serve?
And so that's how we're doing it right now, is that arbitrary $16. The proposed change to recapture operational expenditures is to recapture the operational cost in the ready-to-serv fee, but electricity is included in the operational expenditure. The utilities are included in there.
I'll need to see this in writing. Sorry, I can't keep up.
Yeah, that's okay. I have, in the last slide, there's like an itemization of the costs that are included, or in the last slide deck. It's the costs that are included in the operational expenditures. And I can provide you guys with those. I don't have that, that slide deck up right now, but it's, utility costs are included in operational expenditures. So for, for a resident, their cost does vary based on their usage. They have the ready-to-serv fee regardless of usage, and then they have their usage fee in addition to the ready-to-serv fee. But for us, so we know that our electricity is going to vary, but we budget a set amount for electricity for utilities every year. So that's what we're trying to recapture, is that budgeted value.
I hear you, but I just disagree, I guess philosophically with. Yeah, that's all. We can disagree.
The inclusion, sorry, it's just like the inclusion of utilities in operating, operational expenditures?
No, it is operation. It's, yeah, to me, it's a variable cost. It's operational. I mean, you could tell me that a fraction of it is fixed cost, but to me, the majority of it is going for the unit operations taking place at a wastewater treatment plant. And the more we flush our toilets and put sewage to the plant, the more those unit operations need to operate and they use electricity.
And so that, that, right now, just as we budget, operational expenditures do include utility costs. That's like the, the cost to run the plant. We don't have like a fixed utility cost and then an excess utility cost outside of operational expenditures. I think that we're referring to like different sets of operational expenditures, because in accounting, the utility costs are included in operational expenditures. It, like in our budget, that's how they're included.
Okay.
And so, and I can show you the, the breakdown of exactly what's in there, too, so we can go back through that. We did take out customer accounting from the operational expenditures, because we do have, customer accounting is variable. And so some people might never call us, some people might sign up online. We took that out. That is recaptured in the consumption charge right now.
So it sounds like this, you said that some of this was covered on a slide in the last presentation.
Yeah.
Could we have that resent to us? This is a study session. We will be talking about this again in more detail. And as, at least for me, and Commissioner Werner said it earlier, maybe he's catching up now, some of this is harder for us to do in our heads without some stuff in front of us. So can we, let's not ignore this. Let's get that material out to us again before our next conversation, so we can all digest it. And maybe, you know, you're, you're kind of talking about it as how your accounting definition is versus maybe a standard definition. And, you know, there might be some other examples that are needed to go along with that for the next part of our discussion.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that there is a chart that shows what is covered under the ready-to-serv costs and what is covered under the variable cost.
That, there, it's, it's just showing what's covered in the operational cost. Everything else is covered in the ready-to-serv cost. But that was in the, it's kind of behind the scenes in Waterworth, when he was scrolling through, showing us all of the debt service costs. It was all of the other expenses he went through. And that's a much lengthier list than the operational expenditures. But it, the item, the operational expenditures are itemized in that last slide deck.
And the operational expenditures are what you call the variable cost?
No, those are, those are what we say, what do we need to operate this year?
Those are the ready-to-serve costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we say, what do we need to, to keep this plant operating? And that's, and we kept operational expenditures as that.
Okay, I have another question. It's unclear whether the savings benefit for the, or, I mean, maybe this was already answered. This is difficult stuff for a, an English major. The savings benefit for all customers are equitable in that $100,000 a year savings because of this ready-to-serv reduced fee. If it's equitable for all users or just larger users, like commercial, aren't they proportionally gaining more through this?
So because it is the sewer plant, in the last slide, I apologize, because it did look like if you had a larger ready-to-serv fee, it was proportionally the same. But monetarily, you would see a difference in reduction of cost. So like, I think it was 67 cents for the residential customer and $3.42 for the commercial customer. But that was when it was applied to water. And proportionally, that was 4.2%. And so proportionally, they were the same, even though the values were larger or smaller, because the residential customer pays such a low residential, or sorry, ready-to-serv fee versus the commercial customer. But if you, now that it is applied to sewer at the wastewater treatment plant, the reduction would decrease proportionally by around 2.8%, and that would be the 1.109 per customer per month. And that's, sorry, that's what's on my screen, but you guys probably see the, the previous on yours.
Yep.
So it would be proportional. But because this is based on operational expenditures, if we have pay increases or if we have additional costs for operational expenditures that were not budgeted or, or that are budgeted the subsequent year. So say we see a reduction of $100,000 in energy costs this year, but we have an increase of $100,000 in another area, that offset isn't going to show. Because we have a reduction in revenues in one place and an increase in expenses in another, or I'm sorry, a, a reduction in expenses in one area and an increase in another. So they're gonna net at zero. So overall, this would decrease it by 109, but it could be offset by future increases in expenditures for operational costs. That's why I didn't want to say, everybody's bill's gonna go down by $1.09, because that's not the case. When we see what our actual budgeted operational expenditures are, we're gonna, we're gonna propose the same method. So we're taking our operational expenditures, applying any reduction to our current base rates, and then that's gonna be the ready-to-serv fee. Lots on solar. Then this was another kind of one-off question. It was uncommon customers. So we had a brewery reach out. We do not currently have a different pricing structure for entities that have more water leaving our system than coming, or sorry, more water leaving that's coming, that's not coming back into our sewer system. So we added this slide in because some customers reached out about these uncommon scenarios. Their water usage doesn't accurately reflect the water that's treated in the sewer system. So due to the unique aspects of all situations, the water sewer team works directly with these customers to propose changes. So the cost of these, these changes are the responsibility of the customer. So if they need plumbing changes, if they need any, anything inside change to bill them differently, that is on the cost of the customer. But we can meet with them, the water sewer team can meet with them, to go over any possible changes. And then, like, for example, the brewery, we know that their water doesn't accurately account for the water they use, because it leaves in their product, or the water that they, that comes back into our sewer system. I'm sorry. Because it leaves in their product, it never goes back into our sewer system. And so the water sewer team is gonna work with the city attorney to update the ordinance language that provides clarity on allowable or required meter setups for these customers. Sorry, that was another one off, though. Yeah.
Um, it, 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 it seems that this approach requires customers to install additional meters at their own expense, and isn't this going to hurt small businesses? Are there, will there be any kind of plans to offset those costs for small businesses?
Um, so we're not, we're not proposing, if, if customers believe that our billing structure is inaccurate, we're recommending that they reach out to, to go over their setup with us. We're not gonna just be like, everybody get a deduct meter, because for a lot of entities, this is accurate. A lot of entities aren't having gallons and gallons, like going out on trucks canned. And so for most customers, this isn't applicable. But for the brewery, it wa, it was practical for them to look into plumbing changes to ensure that we were able to bill the product separate from their, their restaurant usage. So, and that cost is directly on the commercial customer, but for most commercial customers, this is not applicable. This is a very uncommon scenario.
So basically breweries or anybody using water-based, creating water-based product?
Yep.
And, and in that case, that's just the cost of doing business and not to be subsidized by the other ratepayers who aren't, who are returning it back to the system for the most part?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And then this, this is another one off. Actually, this is actually the first slide of part two of the presentation. We talked about this last time. So we built this in. But as you know from our last meeting, for most residents, the current ordinance allows us to account for irrigation or water usage that doesn't get treated in the sewer system. So in the summer months, by using the winter quarter average to estimate their summer sewer usage. So this is the average usage between January and March. That's what's applied to their summer usage. So if you use three CCF, January, March, or sorry, January, February, March, but then all of a sudden you use 20 CCF of water in July, you're not gonna be charged 20 CCF going into the sewer. You're gonna be charged three CCF going into the sewer. And this is just for individuals that don't have a separate irrigation meter. So how does this tie into snowbirds? This is because the current ordinance does not allow us to, an alternative to more accurately bill seasonal residents that are not here during that time. So those residents aren't here January, February, March. So essentially, they're leaving January, February, March. They're stopping their billings. They're not getting billed the monthly base rate for those billings. And then when they come back in the summer, their sewer usage is also at zero, because they weren't here. We use January, February, March. So we would like to propose to change the ordinance. It's 104339 shown on this slide, to allow us to use the prior quarter, October through December, to estimate summer sewer usage, but only in the event that the customer's current winter quarter usage was zero. So if somebody comes back with a zero, we want to say, okay, what did they use October through December? Because it's likely they weren't here if it was zero for all three of those months.
Not a question about the slide exactly, but this slide and another one, we're not in our slides in the packet, which is fine for now, but can we make sure that this gets emailed to, this version gets emailed to the commissioners so that before our next discussion, we have all of the information like this in front of us?
Absolutely. Thank you. I apologize.
No, no, it's okay.
I was gonna say, I thought I added this in like right after her meeting, so thank you.
Yep, appreciate the updated information, but just so we're all kind of working from the same base going to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So based on your feedback from this presentation, we would present this ordinance change and the remaining proposed changes for approval at the subsequent commission meeting, or at a subsequent commission meeting, not a study session.
Great.
Sorry, guys.
I, I have a question. I thought that our vacant rate in Traverse City was a lot higher than 1%.
Well, and that's where I would have a question when the ordinance comes back to us of, that I will put ahead when it's on another study session, would be, it's good if it's a zero to go back, but we also, our vacancy rate might be, some people gone just February or just March and not a zero, or, you know, they don't go to the whole trouble of shutting off all their water. They just drop their usage drop significantly for four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks. So still kind of getting that benefit without being a total zero. And so I know this is an overall proposal. I think for a change in the ordinance like that, I would be curious how we could maybe change the ranges that we were looking at, so it's not all or nothing, but reflecting a dramatic drop as well.
The other thing to note is that some people actually do have zero reads when they are here. Like, they don't use enough to take the meter over. So that's, that is a real thing that happens. So I also wouldn't want to penalize somebody who's using so little.
Sure.
And, and maybe that's the other thing. I don't know that the people who aren't turning over the meter are here all the time, though. So maybe, maybe that is something we want to consider, that if you have a zero, it's gonna be based on your normal usage.
And I think that to that end, this is part of your overall general presentation. This is something, as you said, we'll come back to separately and have a separate study session for this ordinance. So I think I'd be very, I'm not, if we speak up if people disagree, but I think the idea here is that we're all interested in this proposal, but the finer details of it, we'd like to talk about it at that time, so.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
And I was gonna say, we can put some, some language together.
I think I'm echoing what Mayor Shamro said, and this is anecdotal lived experience, but, you know, you're, you're looking at a quarterly structure to find those zeros. And I think you also mentioned it, like, we talk about snowbirds, but people are leaving at all different times of the year. I mean, even as early as October. So even if you were to do October, so I, I think I just agree that I'm just curious on how you would, if you're gonna put something in an ordinance that's very prescriptive, like this particular quarter, how that might change over time.
The only other thing to add to that is, is if we have a distinct approach to each individual case, it does take a very long time to compile that with.
Yes.
You're pulling every single person and, and several months of their data, so that. I think that's why initially it was just cut off to a quarter. And it doesn't have to be a quarter, but we were just thinking, if they weren't here, they had zero from January, February, March. Chances are, they're not gonna have zero from October, November, December. They could, but we were hoping to catch October, November, December. We didn't want to go past that, because at that point, it's likely they're gonna start having actual irrigation in their usage. We don't want to overcharge them.
Yep, I think that's, this'll be a good, I think this'll be a good discussion to have on this specifically. Right now, it sounds like we're trying to perfect an ordinance that hasn't been brought forward to us yet. So I'd really like us to hold off on that.
I just wondered, why, why don't you have a ready-to-serv fee for sewer, like you do for water?
There, there is a ready-to-serv fee for sewer, but it's, it's a singular ready-to-serv fee for all customers.
Yeah. So another topic for conversation sometime.
Yeah, the plan is to bring.
We appreciate this massive work that you've done on this. So that's why I don't want to derail us too much from getting to the overall highlights when we're gonna have opportunities to take different bites at these apples, so.
And this is, I want feedback today, because we want to get, I want as much as you have today, because then we can start drafting something and bringing it back. So thank you, guys. So then, this is irrigation. We're moving into irrigation billing practices. And these are very complex. This is the hardest aspect of what I'm gonna try to convey. So essentially, there are three methods of billing for irrigation. They're all outlined on the slide, but you'll see that there are only about 435 irrigation meters. This is because the majority of our residential customers are not using irrigation meters. We kind of talked about this. That's what the whole winter quarter average is for. So the customers without irrigation meters are shown in point one. These customers are billed based on actual metered usage from their water meters, because sewer, sewer costs aren't billed directly, or sorry, because sewer costs are billed directly from water costs to ensure we aren't overcharging sewer costs in the summer months. You'll see. You'll see that for all these customers, the ordinance specifies, in order to give credit for lawn sprinkling, for residential customers for the period of April 15th through October 15th, the average waste or sewer consumption for the months of January, February, and March shall be used as the basis for sewer, for the sewer service charge. So this is what we call the winter quarter adjustment that we, we went over pretty heavily for the seasonal customers. So that's how the majority of our customers are billed. Then there's 435 separate irrigation meters. And there's two different types of irrigation meters. So one, oh, I'm sorry, I just changed my slide on there. And point two, this is the second set. There are customers with a separate irrigation meter. Currently, our ordinance only allows for us to bill for irrigation between May 31st and October 31st, even if the customer has usage after. This causes a lot of confusion for customers who don't see usage until after October 31st because they appear in May, and then they have May's usage, potentially April's usage, and October's usage. They call us and they're like, no way did I use this much water. It's very confusing for customers to try to be like, yeah, remember back in October when you were watering your lawn still? Very, very, or in November, like we had a really, really dry, a really, really warm year this year. So people were still watering, we're gonna have questions next year. Because this causes a lot of confusion, we are also going to propose to change that ordinance to allow us to bill year-round based on actual usage. But that is, that's for about 338 customers. And then we have the third subset of customers, very, very small, about 97 meters. And they have a deduct meter. So this is a separate meter that allows us to measure the water not entering the sewer system. Three different types. And the reason why this is so complex is because I'm gonna propose to make changes to a lot of it. And so if you guys have any questions on this now, we're gonna get a little, dive a little deeper after this. Yeah.
Could you give us examples of who might fall into bucket number two and bucket number three? It would help us, help me to sort of visualize the, the type of customer that, that would be in either of those categories.
So right now, bucket number one is most residential customers. They just have a singular meter, we're just measuring exactly what's coming out of that meter. We're charging for exactly what's coming out of that meter. Except for for sewer, we're reducing the, the cost of sewer by the winter quarter, to the winter quarter average. So that's our vast majority. Second set is a customer that has their water meter, and then they have a separate irrigation meter. So this is a customer that wants to know exactly what's going out into the lawn, exactly what's going into their pool, their hot tub. This customer has two meters.
Right, is there an example of a, of a, I presume most of these are commercial?
I think that it's, it's around 60 residential and the remainder are commercial, but I can verify with that. I think almost all the deductions are residential, but, or I'm sorry, are commercial, but I think that.
Well, you mentioned hot tubs and pools, so that might account for that.
Okay, that helps me, that helps me.
And it is a very-
How about the third type? Are those mostly commercial?
Yes, those are primarily commercial. And I think that Justin and Art might have better examples, they are all commercial. And this is what we were suggesting for the brewery customer, that they get a deduct meter so that they would be able to know exactly what's coming back into the sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry for, those, these are really odd scenarios, and it's a very small subset of customers. So we touched a little bit on billing issues in the last one. But there are several issues with our current irrigation billing practices that cause a lot of corrections and a lot of customer confusion. So one thing that we believe would alleviate a lot of this confusion would be to propose a change to ordinance 1044.16 to allow us to bill year-round based on consumption. This way, customers would receive a bill when they had usage instead of several months after the fact. This change would also allow us to bill customers irrigation on the same bill with a separate line item as their current water sewer bill. So right now, these irrigation customers, because we have to turn their bills on in April and off in October, they can't be on the same account as their water sewer charges. So we have to send out separate bills for irrigation and for water sewer. So this would allow us to combine them in a separate line item where we're not turning off the account that has irrigation on it. It would just be on all the time. And then it would also, I'm sorry, it would alleviate customer confusion. It's more environmentally friendly, and it would save on postage, printing, or electronic delivery costs. So that was, those are the two proposed changes to the ordinances. But before we move into the irrigation billing proposal, currently irrigation meters are only charged the base rate for six months with six CCF included for all usage billed at $2.17 per CCF. So before we're going into the proposal, this is what we're currently doing. We're saying irrigation meters are charged for the base rate exactly the same as a regular water sewer meter, or sorry, a regular water meter, not sewer. They're charged at the same as their water meter, depending on the size of the meter. And then they're getting that first six CCF included in that base rate. It's the same thing that we did with water, but that six CCF is now included. If they have two accounts, their water account is getting that six CCF deduction right now before we start charging consumption. And then also their irrigation account is getting six CCF removed before we start charging consumption. So that's what we're doing right now. We would like to propose to change that. So we'd like to propose to charge rates year-round, but at a fourth of the corresponding water meter ready-to-serve rate. So it's a fourth, we're charging it year-round. So it's essentially half of the ready-to-serve rate for a water meter. This, we're also recommending, sorry, that the irrigation consumption is charged at the second tier of residential usage. So it's always charged at 2.17 for all consumption, that six CCF is not included with that irrigation meter. And then, as we explained in the previous slide, these irrigation bills would be, would be separately itemized, but would still be included on the customers' regular water sewer bills. So we're recommending a fourth of the water meter ready-to-serve fee, because we aren't attempting to penalize people for utilizing an irrigation meter. Most of our customers are using their water meters for irrigation. So we're charging them half the ready, we're proposing to charge them half the ready-to-serve fee for the year, which is the same ready-to-serve fee that they're getting charged now essentially, because they're only getting it for six years, six months, and we're proposing to charge it for 12 months at a fourth. So same ready-to-serve fee, but now they're being charged for all consumption. Yeah.
As you went through internal conversations coming up with the quarter rate for ready-to-serve, were, were there any discussions that got individuals thinking about what it means to be ready-to-serve? Because what's, so if there's two meters, they happen to be on the same property, one's a full ready-to-serve, one's a quarter ready-to-serve, but if we have two neighbors on small parcels real close to each other, they each have to pay full ready-to-serve. Like what's, what's the difference if it's really ready-to-serve, if we're really?
So we still would have to maintain two meters at that point. So the ready-to-serve fee is truly intended to cover the cost of, if that meter goes down, we can replace it, and they paid for that replacement in their ready-to-serve fee. I think it's a five-year replacement cycle, so they would essentially have five years to pay off that meter. That's what the ready-to-serve fee would do with that meter. So it's kind of counterintuitive to call that the ready-to-serve fee, because it's, it's not capturing the ready-to-serve cost. We are calling it the ready-to-serve fee though, because that's what we're shifting to with everything else.
Shouldn't it cover the cost?
It does-
Like if we have two neighbors and they each have to cover the cost, why, if there's one neighbor with two meters, shouldn't they have to cover the cost for both meters? And whatever we're associating with infrastructure and the pipes that get there, the pipes that leave, et cetera, et cetera.
And so that was a cover, initially when I set this up, I did say, you're getting the same ready-to-serve fee as everybody else every single month, no matter what. And then I looked at the difference that that was going to charge irrigation customers versus regular water customers. And then knowing that this is like a small set of individuals, they're essentially doing the same thing that those water customers are doing. They're just using a separate meter to do it, so they're more accurately being billed for it. So if we say, you have to be charged two ready-to-serve fees, even though in most cases, these are sharing like the same lines up to your house, but you're doing the same thing that a regular water meter is doing, the equity there was like difficult to substantiate, because if you have a separate meter, really, the extra cost to us is that separate meter replacement. So we're, it's the same lines generally to those meters, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, in these cases, the same lines to those meters. And then we're also billing for them on the same bills now. So we're sending out one bill, the cost to be ready to serve them isn't increasing versus when it had before. So we're, we're still charging them that six months throughout the year.
Okay, and I won't push on anymore, but to me, it should be like that incremental cost, right?
Right.
The incremental cost of, you have one meter, oh, you want another meter? What's it cost to the utility to actually provide that service? And same, if your neighbor who's only 10 feet away, what's the incremental cost for them to have a meter that's ready to serve?
And so we can shift to complete ready-to-serve fee on irrigation meters, that is the initial approach that I took. But it does, and it does like severely penalize people for using irrigation meter. And it's not even, it's not even a penalize, it increases the cost to an irrigation meter user.
So-
But if that's the cost to the utility, then they, to me, they should cover the cost. Like if there's a cost to the city-
Right.
And there, there is, so the same-
Then they should cover that cost.
But can I just, because I'm hearing what Tim's saying, but in my, based on the answer that John is giving, what I'm hearing is like in your example, the two next-door neighbors will have two different lines to get to their house, and this is measuring on the same line pretty much up to the two different meters. So the, the reduced rate and cost is the cost of the extra meter, because there isn't a lot of extra cost to the utility to be there because of the first line. Is that kind of a summary? I'm, I'm trying to check this as much as you, I'm not saying authoritatively at all, like.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was the idea behind it. So people with irrigation meters, they're still being charged for all of their consumption, and they're being charged for that additional meter, the recapturing cost to replace that meter. And it is a five-year recapture cost. They do go, the batteries go bad in them at around 10 years. But it is a five-year recapture cost, assuming that it's going to last five years. So there could be potential losses on that. But it is just to recapture the cost of that meter, because the line that we're serving from is the same. And so like if that person just used their residential meter to irrigate their lawn, the only cost that they would see for that additional consumption would be 217 per CCF. So we are charging them a little bit more to maintain that meter, but we're not charging them the full ready-to-serve fee. But we, if we want to pivot to do that, absolutely can put it into my model, and it would change the proposal for ready-to-serve fee with fiscal year '25, '26 rates.
I have a question based on that, is if we did do that, these irrigation, and I apologize if this was in the first presentation and my mind has just gone blank on it. If we did do that, these 300-some users that have the irrigation that they're gonna now pay a higher rate on, well, a different rate, would, is there the option in these scenarios, much to Jackie's point of who's using these, where they would just potentially could just say, you know what, I'm not paying for another meter and all this other stuff, and I'm just gonna do it on my regular water meter? And by not capturing even the smallest of fees, we're potentially losing out on that extra fee for the, the higher rate for the actual irrigation fee?
And the more accurate.
Right, and the more accurate, so that also with real time can, and if we get into green rates or something down the line too, could be a loss of income and information for them to make better decisions on. So is that kind of, okay?
Yeah, that's exactly, so our irrigation customers are our most specific customers, so we know exactly what they're using for irrigation. We, that being said though, we do not say, okay, this customer has an irrigation meter, we're not giving them the winter quarter.
Right.
We don't do that. So that could be something, it would be like a handful of customers, that could be some way that we approach it. But that is, they could say, like, I don't want a separate irrigation meter, I don't want a separate ready-to-serve fee. They could just consolidate, that's what almost everybody does.
Because I agree, I see where Commissioner Warner's point is. I want to be careful that we don't use too much of a stick to lose out on some of the, the better effects of having that better monitoring and more, more awareness.
Yeah.
So this is study session, we have lots of discussion coming on this too, but.
No, and this is like really, really good, this is what I want to know so that we can make changes, because if proposed, I want to, we want to be prepared when we propose. So that, that was my proposal. So the, the next set of rates is going to be based on that, one-fourth the ready-to-serve fee the entire year, constant consumption at 2.17, the commercial rate, the residential rate after four CCF that I was proposing. So that, that's what this next slide did, that's what this would look like. Across the board, you can see that the annual increase, sorry, let's, let's step back a little, let's go through the columns. I think you guys got color this time too. So here you'll see a similar rate comparison to what we did for water and sewer. The blue is the current, the green is the proposed, and then the pink is the annual difference or increase. When I presented water sewer rates, I presented these monthly, because every month I was, I was proposing to do the same thing. Because we're only billing for six months out of the year, I can't say, I can't compare a six-month term to a 12-month term, so I'm just comparing the whole year. And so that's the big difference that you're going to see between this and the water sewer rates that were proposed, the, the slide that proposed those. And then you'll notice that the consumption difference on all of them is 78.12, and this is due to charging for the first six CCF monthly. And that's the entire year, 78.12, not monthly. And so that the difference between the decreased cost and the ready-to-serve fees and the consumption charges is 27.48 for all customers. But that is throughout the entire year, 27.48 increase for a 12-month period. And that is with the, the one-fourth rate, no CCF included. But we, again, this is like very malleable, so we can still change it. So the overall, it's a 27.4 increase per year for customers using greater than six CCF, which is essentially all irrigation customers. It doesn't mean that the cost for 40 CCF and for 10 CCF is the same, rather that the difference between the prior method and the current method is 27.48. So if you look at it, you can see the 40 CCF customer is paying 90.58. The, and that is, I, I, that is all together. Sorry, that is, that is one month. So I, I showed you one month in the comparison, but then I multiplied it out in the annual total, so I don't want that to be confusing. But you'll see the, the top 40 CCF customer is paying 90.58, and then the bottom 10 CCF per month customer, the average customer is going to be using like 20 CCF. So that customer is paying 25.48, the 10 CCF customer, that's a low user. The high user is paying 90.58. But overall, their, their difference throughout, throughout the year is the 27.48. But that is under the, the other proposed method, so absolutely, please let me know if you guys have any suggestions. And then if you don't have any, we're gonna move another segue into meter history and technology. And before I get into this, I just wanted to say, at the last meeting, Tim had reached out about customer response to conservation promotion. And I reached out to TCLP, I talked to Carla, and she said that they had a study based on time of usage for electricity. So their cost to provide electrical services deviates throughout the day. At peak periods, they're using more expensive types of electricity, and then at lower periods, they're using cheaper types of electricity to provide services. So that's how their study was used, it was time of use, not necessarily overall reduction. And so when I talked to her, she's like, it doesn't really go apple to apples, apples to apples with what you're looking for. But she did say, it was a volunteer group, and there was a huge response to that. But it, sorry, it does make me like feel confident in like a more conservative approach. But I, that was again, the, the voluntary subset, so they're the most mindful individuals likely. And then it was for time of use, not overall reduction. So they're just using at different times of the day, instead of using less throughout the day.
And time of use, Tim, this is just for my own to remind me, because I've only been off for a year, but that is where, that is dictated though by the, like kind of the overall usage of the grid, not Traverse City specifically.
Right, it's like what's, what is more expensive electricity to Traverse City Light &amp; Power?
Right, and it often-
Through their contract, so-
Yes.
To the ratepayers then, and there's peak, which is typically late afternoon.
And that was what I want to clarify, is the data isn't from, well, Traverse City uses its most eight to five. It's that the grid or the, where they're pulling the energy from uses its most during that time period. And I only point that out to, their, their time of rate is used, is influenced by outside sources as well versus us being very much our own on this. So as we get into a green rate, or maybe not a time of rate, but something similar like that of, how do we even out usage or even out costs? We could look at that on a much more unique, individual, individual to Traverse City level, not individual to person level. So that was just what I was clarifying as we go into this.
And that was the other thing, that's a really good topic Carla was saying. For you guys, if the customer uses less, you're truly capturing less. There's no reduced cost for you at a, at a large scale. And that's for electricity, there is a reduced cost, and that is directly carried to the customer under their pilot program. And so that was the other thing, you said the outside contractors, they are able to use less of those and give the customers that incentivization to use at different times where we don't really have that flexibility, because we're a single source.
Right. But it also allows us to look at data more clearly if we want to try and influence patterns and behaviors though, too.
Yeah.
Big, bigger picture, and this isn't on that, but to me, like if, if we start to encourage conservation, whatever that might be, and it rolls out slowly over the coming years- and it rolls out slowly over the coming years to decades, we have the opportunity to save a tremendous amount of money by not duplicating the water treatment plant, which we have that parcel of property, and that's been the plan for decades is what my understanding is to just, oh, we'll just build it again like a mirror image right next door, but that's a huge investment. So if we can avoid that or push it off 50 years, that saves everybody lots of money.
And that is, yeah, that is a huge cost savings, but very long-term.
Very long-term, but it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this, this is, this part's pretty exciting, this is the most exciting part of the presentation to me because it influences customers so heavily. So we're going to move on to meter history and technology. In part one of the presentation, I talked about some meter issues that caused some unreliability in the usage data. That's why I didn't want to go back further than a year. So we're going to cover those meters right now. So the meters I was referring to are the manual meters shown in point one. These are manual meters that are very, sorry, that we are attempting to phase out because they're very costly. They require a manual reader for commercial accounts, and it estimated, it's estimated to cost us about $53,000 a year to get that reader out there reading those for us. We also estimate all residential customers with these meters because it's, it's too costly and time-consuming to actually get the reads in time to bill. So these, these meters are, we want to get rid of these. So the customers that we're estimating for residential are not paying actual usage, they're actually paying just the base rate right now because there's nothing, there's no charge between zero and six CCF. So they could be using 12, and we're not able to determine that because we don't have a reader. So we want these out of the field. There's been a delay in these, so I'm going to go into that in a second. But it skews, not only does it cost us to potentially be losing revenue, but it also skews previous year's data because we're not, because now that we're actively charging these out, changing these out, I'm not able to say like, okay, there was 1,000 in the field last year. Between May and April, 200 got reduced, so I need to take out those 200. I don't have that data of which ones got changed out when. And so I can't accurately say this is that person's usage because a lot of it is estimated. So those I did not include in my data for the four CCF recommendation at the ready to serve fee. Those customers are excluded. And there's about, oh, we're going to go into that in a second. There are about 300, sorry, yeah, there's about 300 of these, 303 as of the 10th, and that's today. Sorry, I got this data just before we came in, updated data. So there's about 300 remaining in the field, and they're actively working on getting them changed to the new Badger meters, which we'll cover in a second. We hired an independent contractor to come in and change out the remaining two-inch meters. These are our commercial accounts, so that would eliminate the need for that $53,000 a year meter reader. So we're down to roughly 250 of those remaining in the field after March, the expected completion date is March 2025. And it sounds like, what are these still doing out there? Because that's, I was like, what are these doing out there? We can't, we don't have good data on these. The overall takeaway from this slide though is that we should have them all changed out by the summer of 2025, and we were very limited in our replacement of these meters by a vendor that we'll discuss in the next slide. So point two, you'll see that the combination that is our most common combination, these are the meters that we were hoping to switch out those Itron meters with, but we've, we reached some delays. So they come with significant issues. We shifted with these, to these meters and nodes at the same time as TCLP in 2019. There was a mass rollout of these. You guys, I don't know, if, I wasn't here at that time, so I don't know if anybody else was here at that time. But it was, the intention was to get these changed out quickly, do it all in mass, get these old ones out of the field. But the node or the endpoint, which is the piece of equipment that reads usage and transmits all that data to us to be able to bill for it, that Eaton endpoint, the reader, was designed for electricity. So we've experienced some industry-specific issues in read information, but we're able to find workarounds with our software for most of those. So we're kind of like limping through. The primary reason that we ultimately moved away from them was due to the inability to provide product. We placed an order in March of 2023, and these were, the lead times on these were really great. So we're expecting an 11-month lead time, that was what was indicated by the provider. This is 2023 now, so we're a few years out from COVID and those supply chain issues, 11 months. So months passed after that 11 months, and they're not able to deliver or provide an updated delivery date. So we then began exploring other options for endpoints that we could utilize on our existing meters. So we're not trying to change out the meter, just the piece that transmit the read data to us. So in June 2024, we moved away from that provider, and by summer of this year, we should have all those Itrons changed out. But the bottom line with this reader was that we couldn't continue to use a vendor that was not able to provide us products necessary to provide services. So that's how we ended up shifting to the Beacon endpoints, which we're going to discuss in the next slide. So there's about three different combinations that we're going through right now. And sorry guys, this is slide 13, but these are the content-heavy ones, we made it pass. So I think these ones will go, they're a lot more informational. So our newest combination is a Badger meter and a Beacon endpoint. This is very confusing for me when I first started because I'm like, so many, so many different things. But basically Badgers are a meter provider that we've had, that was the mass changed meter in 2019. And then we switched to the Beacon endpoints, which are the Badger endpoints. So they actually go with this meter. They call them Beacon because of software that's used to read. So the Beacon endpoints were designed to be used in the Badger meters that we already have for specific reading water, for specifically reading water usage. With the new meters that we receive, we get cellular reads four times a day in 15-minute increments, and we hope to utilize the software to empower customers to see their usage and select leak thresholds. We believe that these new endpoints provide us with solid data moving forward to be able to accurately bill. These are also the meters that we're seeing surrounding Grand Traverse County Township, which too, so alignment with what our counterparts are doing. And then we have been implementing these since June, the transition has been really good. All node changes or new meters will receive this new endpoints, we're slowly getting them in. But our priority was to get rid of those Itron meters first. So we're, we're changing out those meters, getting those new nodes attached to the water sewer team, working really hard to get these all switched over, so thank you guys, because they are, they're a monster. But we don't expect a mass change with these new meters, just like, not like what we did with Itron, or sorry, with Eaton, there's so many of them, not like what we did in 2019. We're not expecting to do like a mass change and be like, we need all these nodes. We're going to phase them in, but we've been implementing them. We expect a mass change within the next four years though because the meter that we currently have and the endpoint battery both have a separate battery with a 10-year life expectancy. So we know that it's likely we're going to have to change out the meters within 10 years, and that would be 2029. Sorry guys, that's probably like my hurry up sign.
No, no, sorry, that is my, my medical device, so I apologize. I was trying to get it before it went off, and it went off before I got it, so we're good.
I'm at like exactly an hour right now, so I was like.
No, 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 nope, you're good. I'm not venue, I don't have the clock.
Can I ask you a question about the 10, 20 years thing?
Yes.
Though is, does the Badger meter have to be replaced, or can the battery be replaced?
It's just the battery, and we can still use that, sorry, we can still use that same meter again with these new Beacon endpoints. They're compatible, they're actually the, the endpoints that are meant for this meter. So we just have to change the battery. Yeah, the hardware will stay, no, no hard installs, they're just switching out the battery. No? Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, I, I read that in my notes, I apologize, I've been corrected by the water sewer staff. It is the meter that has to be changed out. Okay, so the whole meter has to get changed out.
Can you come up to the mic, sorry? This is Justin and Roy with our.
Justin Roy, Superintendent Water and Sewer. So the, it's a 10-year guarantee with a 20-year possibility. So if, if they fail before 10 years, we, we get a new one for nothing, it's replaced for nothing. Every, then it's prorated for the next 10 after that. So it's possible that they would go 20 years, they could go 30, it's just, it's all on the batteries. But yes, the whole meter or the endpoint, whatever goes first, then the whole thing has to be replaced.
Thanks. Is that kind of, well, really quick, just, and you can even head nod, is that kind of industry standard? They're not guaranteeing anything to be like, we'll just come replace the battery, we want, everybody wants you to replace it every X amount of time?
The old iPearl, the, the census meter that we went away from.
Sorry. It's okay. I know who I am.
The census meter we went away from, similar technology, same battery, same guarantee. So it's, that's, the 10 and 20 is basically industry standard.
That's, I just, I figured as much, but I just wanted to check that we can't, we won't ask that everybody go search for the one that's going to allow us to replace batteries when no such product exists, so thank you.
We have been able to get rid of the batteries locally, the meters that we have been getting rid of that have the batteries, we've been taking them out to a local recycling company.
Oh, that's great.
And we actually make, I won't say make money, but we don't have to pay for them to get disposed of.
Great, that's even better, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure Heather.
I don't know if this came out of your report or where this came, under next steps. It says, due to the cumulative, cumulative amount of all the endpoints being changed, it's going to require motion. How much is that?
Sorry, so that is the, that is the cost to use this endpoint. The endpoints that we're using before, they piggyback off of each other, they use a, I'm sorry, I, I got to look back at the actual wording on there. They, they use a different method of transmittal, mesh network, sorry. It's a different mode of transmittal. The cellular transmittal is what allows us to get those reads every four hours in 15-minute increments. So right now, we're getting them one time per day in one-hour increments. With the mesh network, they're like bouncing off from each other, and then they finally get to the read point, that read point sends it all to us. The new meters have the cellular endpoint, just like your cell phone, and it, it's allowed to transmit four times an hour, four times a day in 15-minute increments. We can send the transmittal times, one of them's fixed, that is for our biller, they choose that time. But then the other three, we can set to go off at any time. We have just stayed with the standard of their transmitting times, but it allows us to get reads multiple times a day, which is very important for water because you get a leak, you want to know about it as soon as possible, not a day later, four hours later. And so, sorry, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, but that cellular cost is a part of that 90 cents per meter per month that's in there. So I was gonna, I'm not there yet, but I'm, I'm coming right there. Sorry, so. So these meters have a 90 cent per meter per month cost. That is what is going to aggregate to the commission approval level. So if we, sorry, I did not keep the, the value, oh, I did put it there. So Ion Water is available for customers, the cost is included in the monthly service charge. It's what, it gives us cellular, it's our customer service charge, it's the Ion Water, which we'll cover in a second, and then it's also the biller portal, that 90 cents encompasses all of those things. So 90 cents per meter per month, which is currently absorbed by the city, it's about $109 per month right now. But if we transition and every single meter is using these, that's going to be like $7,110 a month. So that's why, that's what's going to get hit commission, commission approval level. So the 7,000 times 12 is going to be over the manager approval level, so it'll come to you guys. But that, that would roll, that would get like bigger and bigger as we're changing out those meters, so not here yet, but that, that would be coming, that's a, a cost of these meters. And then, and then does anybody have any questions on current meters? I'm going to go into a little bit of that software that I talked about, but before we do, does anybody have questions? I was so confused with all the same, felt like there were so many different things that they were calling the same thing in all the different vendors, so if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Good, good.
Thank you. So then, I talked a little bit about this, the Beacon endpoints and early leak detection. So a huge benefit of the Beacon endpoints is the software that comes with it. The software is great at finding leaks, leaks are costly and can happen to anyone, so early leak detection is key. This slide shows a few examples of recent customer leaks, and the city was actually a victim of one of these. We had a frozen meter just, just like last week, and we were able to catch it early because we were billing, actually. It happened a week before we billed, that's how we found it now, early is a week right now. Early under these new meters would be that day. So you can see, we're, we're listed in there, I don't know the commercial customers, but they're very costly. The, the commercial customer is an extra $722 a month just in water charges, that's not damages associated with the leaks. And then the other customer, $2,400, again, just usage, not damage associated with the leaks. In those situations, we are able to give the customers a discount on the sewer rate because that water just goes back into the ground, but they act, they do pay for that usage on the water. So it's very important that customers are able to isolate leaks early. And we think that this new software, Ion Water, is going to be the key to that. So just a few examples of why early leak detection is so important, and then customer empowerment with Ion Water. So Ion Water is that customer-facing portal that I was talking about, that it would allow customers to view their data at any time. And so they would be able to log in from home, look at their data from that day, four hours ago, or in four hour, it comes up four times a day, so not four hours necessarily, but every few hours, they'd be able to look at it and see it in 15-minute increments, they could also sign up for alerts. So I was just going to show you guys a little, like sneak peek of the, it's 30 seconds of the program. And it should start right where I want it to, I hope, after the commercial. Sorry guys.
The city does not support nor not support anything that you might see on commercials here.
I'm so sorry, it jumps right in. Sorry, I'm not going to go through the quick tour, it's like six-minute tour, but that's just the At-A-Glance dashboard where you can sign up for leak detection. You can see on his screen right there, that's the usage for that meter. It'll tell you, like, you're, no leak detected, you're doing good. But if there's continuous flow on a meter for more than, I think, four hours, it will tell you, we think there's a leak. But it might just be that your toilet's running, or that you left the hose on, but good things to know so it's not a day later, you realize the hose is outside in the backyard.
My example isn't in there, but I had a $1,500 bill that snuck up on me one time when I had a leak I didn't know about, so this will be amazing.
And, and that is, that's the thing, it is 90 cents per month that we are proposing to shift to the customer in this, within this fiscal year or next fiscal year, but only to the customers that actually have access to this feature. So it's 90 cents per month per meter, it's less than $12 a year, but you got, you saw one leak, and that's just the usage cost of a leak. And then in addition to that, the actual cleanup cost is so much more, you, unfortunately, if that happened to anybody, anytime.
Well, to be fair, it wasn't a leak, it was a running toilet, so, but it was just something I didn't know about.
$1,500 though, like that's huge, sorry, I, that's huge. So that's what we're hoping to mitigate with, with the software. And that was just like a little, a little snippet of it. In addition to customer empowerment, there's also biller empowerment. So we get notifications, we get potential leak detections. We went through with the water sewer team about a month and a half back and went through all those leak detections, and we're like, do we actually think this is a leak? Like, nope, this is an area where there's low pressure, this is an area where continuous flow is expected. We're able to go through all of those, and you can notate on the account, like, do we think it's a leak? I can see what water sewer is putting in there, they can see what I'm sending, putting in there. And then ultimately, we hope to use this to send notifications to customers. And I think one of the commissioners, free shout, I'm not sure if it was Heather or Jackie, about what are we going to do when we have this information? And so we're going to send a one-time notice to customers to let them know, hey, we think you have a leak, look at it a little bit harder, sign up for this software and be able to monitor it yourself. And then we also notate that on the account that they've been notified, they know they have this opportunity, and then we would move on from there. But right now, we're kind of getting this after the fact, and the information that we're getting is very difficult to actually determine if there's a leak. It's like thousands of them, and they're almost all inaccurate. And so right now, we had, I think on here, it shows like, this is the other, there's a bunch of different things. It tells us, it tells us node health, so like, is our device online, does it have connection? Are they, oh, how many are in the field versus how many we have? The other one, the previous slide that I showed, showed leaks detection. So see, 64% had status okay, and then there was continuous flow meters. There were 11 with leaks detected, and then some of them with no recent flow. So there are no recent flows, we were able to go through all of those though and take a look at them and be like, does this make sense? Very easily in a way that we were never able to with our prior software. So that's just another benefit of those cellular meters, and that's where that 90 cents per month comes in. So it's the biller empowerment, customer empowerment, and the accessibility of those constant reads with reliable reads. Also, the vendor is able to provide us product in a very timely manner. And then, sorry, so that's, that's all on metering, we're, we're kind of switching gears like everywhere today. But these are smaller sections of information. The next piece is utility customer service policies and termination policies. Did anybody have questions on meters though before? We're on slide 17 of 21, and these next ones, they're all policies, the next four slides are very relevant to each other. So outside of meters, we're going to go into the utility customer service policy and termination policies. I'm not going to go into specifics of every single policy, we're repeating a lot. The primary change is to remove TCLP. So TCLP had their new policies approved by their board in October, and we want to adjust ours as soon as possible to make those changes to exclude them from our policies. So they took us out of theirs, now we're responding, or, sorry, they didn't take us out of theirs, they made their own policies. Now we need to take them out of ours so that they're not duplicated in there. So they had their policies approved in October, we're trying to get them submitted for ours. But prior to submission, we wanted to discuss some areas that we're not sure how to approach now that we're separated. So shut-off policies. So shut-off policies, the shut-off policy is the, the largest area of concern, shut-offs and terminations. So shut-off policy, the main area of concern is how to approach shut-offs for non-payment. In the past, we used to shut off electricity for past due balances and then collect amounts due for electricity and water prior to turning the power back on. So TCLP was our primary collections approach, sorry. Now that we're separated, though, we don't have the ability to shut off electricity for non-payment. So it's my understanding that in the past, the commission expressed that they would like to approach access to water as a human right. So we are not performing shut-offs at this time without traversing light power. Nobody is going without our water if they aren't, if they haven't paid. We do send out shut-off notices that you're eligible for shut-off, but we do not perform the shut-off. So there are several reasons why we don't perform the shut-offs, including that viewing water as a basic human right. But there are also some situations where we don't have the means of collection without those shut-offs. Also, there are some situations where we can't collect even if we shut off the water. So some complexes have one meter servicing multiple locations. We can't just shut off that meter and then get the people who did pay versus getting the people who don't pay. So multiple reasons why we don't perform shut-offs. But they are a very important piece of collections. So our outstanding receivables are about sixteen thousand dollars over the last twenty years. That's largely in part to being able to collect through light and power. They are an extreme problem right now, but we wanna get ahead of these situations before they could become problems. So ultimately, if costs are not recaptured, we can pursue legal action, but that legal action is generally more costly than the recovery. And then that costly recovery is put back on customers. So we don't believe that that's an equitable situation. So we're looking for feedback on how to approach that.
Really quick question on that.
Yeah.
You know, sixteen thousand dollars is nothing to sneeze at, but it also, to me, is not exactly like, there's hundreds of people every month that are sixty or ninety days behind. Is that something that with the current workloads or anything, and I, believe me, I'm hesitant to say this, as, you know, a part-time person could be hired or something else of just calling and offering like payment plans or anything like that? Do we currently do anything like that where we are the outreach? Because I think when people start seeing a shut-off notice, especially if it's after thirty or forty-five days, that, that is more of a panic response. And maybe even if it's a financial difficulty, a hideaway than, rather than a, boy, I should reach out to them and like, see, see what's, see what's going on, can they help me? Like, you know, I, I think that, again, I'll go back to my fifteen hundred dollar detail that I shared. You know, I was able to pay it, but I was, I had to pay, I think, over three months because I got this huge bill. I called it, and the only reason why I even knew that was available right away is I called because I thought it was an error. And then they said, no, but we can put you on this payment plan. And I said, okay, that's great. If I hadn't had that initial knee jerk of like, oh, this might be wrong, I wouldn't have called customer service first. And this was after I was elected, by the way. And so even me, as somebody who's familiar with the system and our staff and know that they're very friendly to work with, it's still kind of a like, oh, I, this is my bill, what am I gonna do? And, and so I guess my question would be, is there, is, is you guys explore this and not necessarily looking for today? Is there that kind of more personable approach that we can take that isn't going to cost taxpayers a whole extra person? But is there such a huge number that it couldn't be a part of somebody's job for a half a day a month or something like that? And could we set it at a sixty or ninety day so that we're not letting it get too far away? But we're also not like, oh, somebody forgot to pay their bill one month, or an auto pay didn't work out, and we're sicking the dogs on them now.
And, yeah, so we don't, we do not reach out to them if there is impersonal. Like, we send them a notification that says, please give us a call, we can set up payment plans, we can offer, we can provide you with details on assistance. So there is that communication that goes out, but it isn't a call. And we could implement a call for a certain threshold over a certain number of days. We could absolutely do that. Cause collections, to be honest, that position is like seeking, seeking action right now. They just don't know how to approach it. So we can call, that is a great thing that we can start today. But then in those, after those efforts, that's really where we've called, we can't, we've offered solutions, we can't collect. This is where that sixteen thousand comes in. In, in the past, TCLP was a huge resource to do stuff like that. And so it's not that, I, I think that we absolutely could do more in providing information to customers in need. So I absolutely think that we can implement that like tomorrow. But as far as when they are past that point, they've talked to them, we got a payment plan set up, the payment plan isn't paid. Those are situations where if that customer leaves, we have, there are some situations where we have a, a means to collect, and that is through leaning. And I'm sorry, that's on this slide. But if we can't lean the customer's taxes, we have no means for collections. And that's really the situation that we're looking for guidance in, is we can't lean it, we don't have a way to recapture, we've reached out. Like, how should we approach that? Cause otherwise, if it's unpaid, it comes back to every single paying customer. That is a cost to the system, it's not being paid, it comes back to the system. So how do we, how do we approach that? And, sorry, I was just gonna go into the slide if you don't have.
That's okay, I got ahead of myself. Forgot this was the next slide coming up, so.
Yeah, no, that's okay. But I was just gonna say, typically, if a customer doesn't pay, we lean the outstanding, outstanding balance to their taxes. And then the balance due is recaptured when they pay their taxes. However, there are some customers that we can't lean due to rental affidavits submitted by the landowner. So the affidavit essentially states that the owner isn't responsible for the tenant's debt, so we cannot lean their taxes for that debt. This essentially makes the city responsible for collecting the tenant's debt. And then if unpaid, ultimately, the liability falls onto the users of the system. So we've talked to other entities because this is a huge area where we're approaching this as a human right. We're not trying to take away anybody's water, we're trying to make this feasible and equitable for everybody. So how do we go about collections? And then the next slide, we have some suggestions from municipalities and from our meter company, so.
So how much does this end up being in a typical year?
So we don't have good data on it because we just separated from TCLP. So we can't say for sure that the four thousand dollars we accrued this year is what we're gonna accrue every year since then. Because a lot of people see this on shut-off notice, and they're like, yep, they've shut me off before for electricity. We know that this is a means of collection and I need to pay this. We haven't been performing shut-offs. And a lot of, a lot of the collective balances are due to the, the shut-off notice. And now it's kind of a moot notice, just that you're eligible for shut-off, but we're, we're not performing shut-offs right now. Cause we don't have instruction on how to do that. So I'm hoping you, I don't have good data though.
And it's only sixteen thousand dollars.
Well, and it's four thousand dollars a year if it was last year.
Has changed dramatically. I think that's your point, is that the things that worked before are no longer available.
And they did work very well before, yeah. It's just that we're, we're in a situation of, of change and uncertainty. So I don't know that the, the shut-off notice letter isn't a, a good means of recapture versus actually shutting off. And I don't have good data for the time that, how effective that is.
Let's hear, your, your next slide is possible solution, so let's have you present, but, and then we can talk from there, but, I know I have.
I know, it's a very, very small, it's a very small amount right now. It's just that I anticipate, I feel like it's, it's reasonable to anticipate that we're gonna see changes based on changes in procedures. So other municipalities that operate on a non, non-shut-off policy will require a very large deposit, about one year of the ready-to-serve fees. Or some require that the landowner must put the utility into their name. We anticipate that a lot of landowners will not be interested in putting their tenant's bill into their names. So over the time that we have, over the time that this municipality, this specific municipality, they said that they provided both options. So you can pay, have your tenant pay the one year of ready-to-serve fees, or put it into your name. They said every single person put it into the landowner's name. They did not make their tenants pay one year of ready-to-serve fees. I'm not saying that that would be the same in our population, but that is an approach that other municipalities have taken. The large deposit or the requirement that if it's your property, you're putting it in your name, you're assuming the liability, not the city. And then another alternative came from Badger, our meter company. They suggested a different type of meter that has a remote flow restriction. So these meters are more costly, but it would allow us to remotely shut off or reduce usage to a set amount of gallons per hour to ensure that that person has access to water to meet their basic needs, but nothing in excess. So it is a restriction, not a complete lack of access. And then these are just methods that we've come across, but again, hoping for your input on how to proceed.
I, go ahead, Mitch, and then I have a question too.
You said there are, in the previous slide, that there are thirty-one accounts. Do you have some number, maybe just a ballpark of how many accounts are held in a tenant's name rather than the landlord's?
Yeah, we do have the affidavit count, so I, I don't have that in here, but I can, we have an entire listing of the individuals that are on the affidavit list.
Just how big a number are we talking about?
I, I would be guessing at this point. I've seen the spreadsheet, but I, I don't know how far it goes down from, it's at least a page on Excel. So, but I'm not, I don't wanna like postulate and say something inaccurate.
A lot more than thirty-one?
Yes, yeah, there are a lot more than thirty-one, yeah.
When my, I had a question that was, you know, you said that when you've, they've done in the past required a year of positive services, the landowner has tended to just do that for the tenants. If somebody was doing that, let's say they owned, you know, a duplex and they have two people renting on each side. So they try, decide to do that. If one person moves out and one person moves in, but they've paid the initial deposit for two places, do they get to hold that? Do we just hold on to that, or are we making them go through this cycle every time somebody moves in and out?
It would be just that continuous deposit, yep, the, the, because technically, there'd be no ownership change for our purposes.
Right.
We would not, we only redeposit when we're closing, or we only refund that deposit when there is a change in ownership.
I figured as much, I just wanted to double check on that, so.
So it'd be like that one time.
Go ahead, Heather and then Jackie.
I, I don't like any of these. It's already horrible to be a landlord and try, it's like chasing cats, herding cats to get them to play like, snowplow bills. And then you have to add utilities in there, they're, landlords are gonna hate it. So how much would the, how much does that meter cost? And is this, is this a kind of grotesque choice to?
The meter's just the same as the meters that go on any other house.
No, no, they are, they're like twenty-five percent more.
Sorry, that's, sorry.
Yeah, they are more expensive, sorry.
Twenty-five percent more, okay.
So how, let's say that the city decides that any, any landlord who wants, who doesn't wanna put their name on the ten, on the tenant, on the building has to buy a meter, how much would that cost?
I think the last time we looked, they were like two hundred and fifty dollars, but that was with, when I talked with Badger about a year and a half. Or it was a little bit under a year ago, cause it was like June, actually, it was like May twenty-twenty-four.
Well, that's preferable.
Like that one-time charge of the restrictive flow meter, but then, sorry.
Jackie's. Yeah, Jackie's next to their question, or Tim, was that about this, or do you have another question? It's about this, okay, go ahead.
It'd be very interesting to know of some, like you reached out to communities for the first possible solution? If through Badger, they could put you in contact with some communities that have used these meters to see.
Implications.
What, yeah, well, how, how did it work out for them?
Yeah.
Before we jump in.
Mm-hmm, that's fair.
I just had a couple of suggestions as far as fact-finding. One, I think it would be helpful if we had some sense of what the most common causes of the uncollectible charges are. You know, I can see a number of life circumstances that might result in not, an unpaid, an unpaid bill. And I'm just wondering if we ever are able to, to gather any of that. And then I also wondered if, if there are any negative consequences to tenants if the utilities are required to be in a, a property owner's name. I, I have a vague recollection of, you know, being told to bring in a utility bill to prove residency when enrolling my child in, in school. And, you know, so are there, are there any downstream effects that we should be taking into account?
As far as like proving residency, there are like several different avenues to prove residency. That is like the most common that they'll suggest is a utility bill. But it would be, you can use like your ID, your passport, your, what'd you say?
A rental agreement too.
Yeah, the rental, the lease agreement, there's like, I think there are like seven other different options that just came out like quickly when I was researching. So there shouldn't be negative impacts to tenants as far as proving residency. But it would be the, it would shift the responsibility of collection to the, the property owner versus the city. So that would be, that would, there might be some increased tensions in, in collections, but they're already attempting to collect debts from them in most cases. And we don't ask, to answer your other question, we don't generally ask, why couldn't you pay? We generally just, regardless of the situation, provide all the different alternatives of assistance. So we don't actually, we don't say, what happened? We say, here's all the resources available to you, try here first, then go here. There's a list, like you gotta try M D H S first before Father Fred or Salvation Army, N M C A A will come in for you. So there is like an order to it. And we do suggest all of those, there's a little card with contact information on it, but we don't typically collect information on why.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I guess, and I'm not a huge fan of this, but I'm curious, how does this work with the controlling the flow? I get the mechanics of how it works, but is it, we tell the tenants then that their only, their water's only available from like five to nine? Is it, you're available, you know, like how does, how does something like that look? Like, I know how it works when people, or when, you know, I think most people would be more familiar with when they throttle your data, right? If you don't have a, an unlimited plan, towards the end of your plan, if you've used a bunch, they don't shut it off. You know, how does that look for water that we've all decided is a human right? And, you know, but we also have to be realistic that we can't just say, as a utility, we're just not gonna collect past, any kind of past due anything because that's also, I, I mean, people could just not decide not to pay. So like, what does something like that restrictive flow look like?
When she came in, she gave me a scenario and she, she said like six gallons per hour. So it was an hourly restriction, not a restriction from a subset of, of time. It was per hour, you'd get some, but it wouldn't be at the magnitude that you had access to before. It was enough for like day-to-day needs, and I think she said that was six gallons per hour.
Okay.
A super short shower.
Yeah.
Yeah, super short.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we're, first of all, does anybody else have other ideas?
Laying towards those, both of those options, but would like some more information.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that this is a conversation, obviously, we would wanna maybe have a little bit more time to think on. Or if you're looking to do something sooner with it, maybe we can instruct emails to be sent in the next, you know, week or two. If you wanna, if you're thinking this'll be something that we have to bring back for a proposal and study session sooner than later, then we can wrap that all up together then. Where, where are you guys at on that?
So we wanna get an independent policy as soon as possible from TCLP. But we could say, at this time, we're not performing shut-offs, and then make just an adjustment to that section of the policy later. Cause I don't, I don't wanna make it confusing if, if we decide to switch. I like to just give people that straight answer, like this is what, how we're approaching it.
Sure.
So there's no, we're just rolling out the one policy, so if we need to, we can come back to just that section.
So if we said, I've gotta remember what today, today's the tenth. So if we said by the end of the month, since it's a short, since it's a short month, are you looking for like the end of this week? What kind of timeframe would you like to hear feedback from commissioners if we all think on this and wanna hear, have more ideas on what we've shared tonight?
If we can get it by the end of the month, that would give me a time later to then meet with Lauren in like April. And then, or, sorry, I'd be ready to come back in April, meet with Lauren through March to draft all of the proposed changes. And then we would, again, request feedback from you guys once we've been able to draft.
And the twenty-eighth happens to be a Friday, but I will say that there have been some questions asked here that I think we would also like to see maybe an email or some kind of correspondence from you to answer some of the questions that you were looking to, like the data and information and, and details. So that, that helps us to see it through the lens that you're trying to see it through as well.
When you say data, you mean like the?
Well, like Mitch's question about who are we looking at as far as who owns, who owes and what type? Cause that's, that's my other thing of, you know, these are non-leenable, does that mean they're all rentals? And, you know, so that we're, you know, I think we're all assuming that most of them would be rentals if not all. And, you know, being very acutely aware of how expensive rentals can be in, when considering something like a deposit fee upfront on somebody who's already paying a deposit fee on a home and in a very expensive area. But, you know, there might be some other, there might be some other information in there too. Go ahead, Jackie.
I'll certainly take advantage of some follow-up questions, cause I have some that, that date back to the, the first study session. But I, I wondered in terms of process, will there be an open house, an opportunity for public comment? Most, most of the anxious emails that I'm getting wanna know, okay, this is what I'm paying now, what am I going to pay?
Oh, really quickly, Jackie, sorry, I'm, I was not clarifying in my point. She saw the slides and we're still talking about this. My thought was to email everybody just about the shut-off notices, not about the whole thing. We've got more conversation coming, sorry, that was, I didn't say that at the top, that I meant that just for the shut-off notices. So that we can continue our conversation to some of these other items and have more questions. But also let, not hold them up from creating their new policy and turn, we could, if we were given total free reign, we could probably spend a forty-five minute part of a study session just on our ideas for shut-off notices, so.
I'm sure.
So yes, don't worry, we'll have more, and then if you still need to, we'll definitely get to that. Sorry about that, that was my lack of communication. Sorry, Mitch?
Yes, you said you didn't, don't ask about why people are unable to pay, and I can fully understand that. But not that you have this information right to go, do you have any idea how many of those cases are tied to a leak or mechanical issue or otherwise abnormally high water usage for one or a couple of months? That hopefully with this new monitoring software, we might be able to catch sooner.
That's a good question. Every one that is a leak, that individual is reached out to, to explain, we think there was a leak. So I'm assuming, nobody reached out to you and there was a leak? Because our utility billing specialist?
No, this was eight years ago, so I got a bill that just, I went from paying like eighty dollars to fifteen hundred.
And you felt like surprised. So our utilities billing specialist does reach out to individuals and let them know like, we think that you had a leak. We took off the sewer charges. What, they confirm, we'll, we can take off the sewer charges, but your bill is gonna increase. And that's kind of what happened in our situation. He like called up the department head and was like, hey, I think you got a leak. And that's what we would do with another customer as well.
Yeah, so to, I think, and that's good to know. But to Mitch's point, is that something that you could run a, a quick number on of like, here's our outstanding? And of these, there are this money that had an abnormal spike somewhere in their last twelve months of billing or something?
As far as leak detection, because?
Well, leak detection, some kind of issue. To his point is, is it a weird thing like somebody like me gets a fifteen hundred dollar bill that they weren't expecting, that they've paid normally this whole time, and now they're struggling to catch up on this unexpected big cost? So, and I, but you've already said too, this is people who have then failed on, failed to be able to continue with a payment plan or something that's already been set up and some other mitigating pieces in between there to try and allow for some of those issues, right?
Yeah, the sixteen hundred, or the sixteen thousand that's outstanding, these are like very extended periods of non-payment. It's not like just arose slightly behind. I think the aging receivables was set out a hundred and twenty days. So it's, it's not individual instances where they're behind. And if people have a payment plan, we don't send out those notices. They're not on this list. We assume that those people are attempting to pay. They're, they're trying to catch up.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarity.
Yeah.
Yeah, those instances are not the instances that we're having trouble collecting on.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that answered the question ahead of time. So, go ahead Jackie.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about users and, and the anxiety levels at this point. I, I think there, there's a lot of anxiousness to understand, how is this going to affect me as an individual user? And I, I would like to know if we can or are already planning to have an open house where there can be dialogue with, with individuals? Or if there's a, a more efficient way to help our, our folks in the city really get a grip on what, how this is going to affect them in their specific, unique circumstances.
And, yeah, and so John, I think you were talking about the next slide, really.
So sorry, this, this is just the unpaid taxes.
After the unpaid, unpaid, I mean, yeah. There we go.
So this is, this is just next steps as far as like changing the ordinances. I don't have the implementation. We, our goal with any kind of mass change would be inserts, public, public outreach through social media, through the Bay Brief, through, we generally haven't posted on the Record Eagle except for the taxes being due, but we usually will post information. I think that the thing that would be most helpful would be a tool that would allow users to enter their usage information. So this is how much I used, this is what the old rate was, this is what the new rate was. So I kind of put together like some situations from specific individuals. And that, sorry, that was the insert that you guys got like right before this. I put together situations, but I did not put it together where it was a, like a PDF that was user-friendly to edit. But I think that I could work with tech to get a locked PDF that would do computations behind the scene. So it would pull out a value for you. I've done that before, but I don't know if the, the version of PDF that we have at the city is compatible with that. But we could probably work around other scenarios that would work. These three situations, so we're like the low cost, the low user, the medium user, the high user, and it was with irrigation, without irrigation. So the handout, this came just before, this handout was actual customers' usage that we polled. And I wanted to highlight the, primarily all our customers are gonna be in examples one and two. It's like fifty percent of our customer base. It's the low user with irrigation or without irrigation. Those customers are gonna see reduced bills because right now they're being charged for that six CCF and the base rate. We're not proposing to, we're proposing to charge a lower rate for the first four CCF and then the higher commercial rate at six CCF, or sorry, for all CCF beyond four. The six CCF user though is the one that I wanted to highlight in that handout, because that six CCF user is the user that is seeing the highest increase. So that user before was paying the same rate, the same base rate, the same rate in general as the user who was using one CCF, the six CCF user, the one CCF user, both paid sixteen dollars per month. We're proposing to change that. So that six CCF user, which is seeing the greatest benefit now, is going to see the greatest increase with the equitable transition of costs. That's, that's the, the plan is to equitably distribute these costs now. So I can give a, I can put together a tool. I'm just not sure logistically on the accessibility of it yet. But I do have examples of actual customers at different usage rates right now.
So two things. One, I think just to summarize, and then we can get into more of the general. I'd like you to go over what these next steps are, because I do appreciate that they're kind of bulleted out after we've had all this massive information. And not in, in a good way. We all understand now that these are the kind of highlighted bullet points of what the next steps are. Because I think that can help everybody in conversation too of saying, okay, our, here's what we're doing to the ordinances, here's what we wanna do this.
Sorry guys.
And then continue to have conversations from there.
I'm just gonna expand. Sorry, those are my slides. Just wanted to make that a little bit bigger, but it didn't work. So I did not re-highlight all of the ordinance changes, but we can, they're, the exact changes, I'm sorry, are listed in.
No, I just, I just was saying, go over to the last slide so we can kind of have a general wrap-up of it. And then we can get into some of these more detailed questions like Jackie's asking, which is totally good to ask and, and have the conversations, but let's.
Wrap up?
Yeah, summarize, and then we can kind of get into the other details.
So the first two areas we wanted to address were the ordinance changes. That was to extend the water sewer winter quarter from just January to March, to also allow us to look from October to December. Also to allow us to bill year-round. Also to allow us to apply the water sewer credit through the term of April, the month of April, through the billing of October. So that was all of those ordinance changes in one, those three changes. Pretty big changes, and we would draft those for you guys coming up at a separate meeting. And then the recommendation to charge irrigation customers at a quarter instead of six months out of the year, which we, again, that's malleable based on feedback. And then that requires a city ordinance change as well. The recommendation to charge the ninety cents per meter per month at the time that that becomes over the department and city manager level. And then the approach to shut-offs. Do we put it in the tenant's name? Do we get the reduced flow meters? Do we require a very large deposit? Do we wanna take another approach? All revisiting those things, getting feedback on them. And then the meter replacement and upgrades, that's kind of outside policies, but that is to consent you that systematic replacement, so no action on that. And then to plan to replace those eaten endpoints that are slowly dying out as their battery life is, as their battery life fails with the beacon endpoints. I'm sorry, there's a lot in this, but it's all kind of scattered.
Well, and I know we just went over it, but I think because we've gone into so much detail on so many of the items, it helps to have a, you know, we're gonna recommend to eliminate irrigation billing issues. We're gonna have all of this kind of summarized with the general hi, oops, sorry, the general highlights. So I just wanted to have that out there as we're getting people watching at home who maybe didn't read the packet ahead of time and wanted just the highlights of, of some of the, some of the things that are out there. So, you know, I appreciate Jackie's mention, like some of the outreach we could do, and you were talking about using a model, that would be great. Jackie had some other points though, so I wanted to hand it back over to you.
Well, I, just to, kudos for the idea of having perhaps a, some code written so that you can enter your current bill on the website and it will spit out at least an estimate of, of what your, your charges would be under, under these changes. I think that would be incredibly useful. And I wondered if there would be in the process of redrafting the ordinance, an open house or an opportunity for direct public comment and feedback from, from our, our customers?
I did not have one planned. The rate changes are, they are outside of the ordinance change. But we, again, the intended distribution of information was to like allow them the tools to get into the depth that they wanted to get into. But we could have an open house. I just, as far as, as getting into an open house, it would be like very user-specific. So we'd be looking at their last twelve months of bills, plugging in that data. And it would be like basically the same tool that, that we would like to provide to them. But it would be like very difficult to cover a large amount of customers in, in an open house period of time. Maybe, maybe like six I could get in, ten minutes each. But it would be, again, we could get feedback, but then there are other avenues to allow for that as well. But I don't know, is that, did we want to have an open house? And we don't actually have.
Reason is a question.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, don't have one hundred percent certainty on a lot of these things. But like maybe moving forward, again, noting that the, the timeline for implementation on the rates is around April.
So I would ask, I guess in, in the vein, I think of, you know, I think a lot of people are gonna be fine with you sending them a list or a link and they can figure out how to, to plug it in. I do know this happens a lot with the clerk's office and some of our other public facing, but if somebody was really struggling with it or couldn't get it to work, maybe that's where during our regular business hours, that, that could be available of, you know, just making people aware that, or staff aware that some people might be coming in with their bill and saying, hey, can you help me figure this out? I couldn't get the link to work, or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's like a service, like anytime if you guys have questions on anything, the CSRs are down there to help. So absolutely, and they're going to be prepared to implement this change. They're, I'm hoping by the time that we have this hammered out, they're gonna know this like the back of their hand, they'll be able to help anybody. But I just need, I need to have those details hammered out so I can give them a good guide.
Heather, did you raise your hand? Sorry. Oh, okay. Just making things up. Go ahead, Tim.
Not for tonight, and I don't know whether this goes through the city manager and out. But more of a, and I anticipate we'll have more of a discussion about water conservation. What that means, what might be possible, what other communities may have, might have done. And something that popped into my mind when you were showing that irrigation season, April fifteenth, October fifteenth. Even that, like, does it need to be that long? I don't, I don't know. Maybe it does, but it seems like April fifteenth seems awful early to start watering your lawn. But that's just me.
Yeah, I never water my lawn, ever.
Well, that's just different to say, but water's so inexpensive.
If we have a super dry spring, I water.
And water's so expensive and there's water all around us, so it's not like we can tell people, oh, there's no water. Like there's an abundance of water. So what's our message for conservation?
And I think like part of the, the irrigation is, so the proposal to be able to bill year-round. So if you're not, if you're not using it, you're getting that three dollars and, it was three dollars and seventy-eight cents with the twenty-four, twenty-five rates. You're getting that billed monthly and you're being, instead of getting billed the full base rate for six months, you're getting a quarter for the entire year. And then you're being billed as you're using. So you're gonna see that show up immediately. That's the other thing is when you're, when you're using it early, there can be a delay on when it gets billed, if you used it before the time. Because some people do, some people water very early, and then also some people water like very late. So they're seeing that appear in April. So we're hoping to just expand that to be able to bill at any time. But you're being charged for, it's more awareness to what you're using, because you're being charged for it immediately, not potentially several months later. And conservation, sorry, I was just gonna.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Touch on the conservation with rates. I looked at other cities and the tiering structure is not a popular perspective. I'm not saying that it is not something that we shouldn't look into. It's just I, finding locations that use a, a more stratified tier structure, structure was difficult. And like we are kind of alone in the approach that we're taking right now with the inclusion of the six CCF, not charging a ready-to-serv fee. So this, this transition is really to get us like aligned onto industry standards and to equitably distribute that first six CCF. So we're charging all customers the same, or we're charging all customers for their usage, not charging them all the same regardless of one CCF versus six CCF.
And I was gonna say, like we're, as we're having these conversations, it just strikes me that we're so far behind. And not in a, in an understandable way, but where when we started some of these efforts with privacy, light and power, you know, people are getting month, or have been getting monthly bills for forever. You know, we're coming out of quarters, we're coming out of all of these other things. And so, you know, I would love it if, I'm putting it out there, the bat signal if you will, to, if we're, as we're changing these and people are gonna start seeing their, their bills in real time. A, I think that'll be illuminating for a lot of people, but also we have a lot of nonprofits in this area that work with the city and, on a lot of things. And we've got a green team and people like that. You know, this could be a great time for the people who are actively promoting the no-mo-may and, you know, getting away from, getting more into natural species instead of grass for lawns and all these other alternative things that aren't the city's job really to do. But knowing that you're gonna start getting charged more for that green, green grass that you've got when you could have a pollinating garden that's gonna need less. You know, there's some really good opportunities here, I think, for some of our nonprofits who are doing a lot of good work to host a seminar in the spring or something and say, hey, like you're, you're about to see your water usage, here's some ways you can really cut down on it. So whether it's water usage specialist period or alternatives to some of those issues that we have with people or some of the people who might be overusing on things that they're not even realizing. So I'm hoping, hoping some people will answer that call, because I think that's gonna be a good conversation to have later. Go ahead Heather.
Yeah, one, one other thing is the use of rain barrels. I mean, that might be something that, if somebody's interested in.
Yeah, if there's groups out there that wanna promote it, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
We use those for irrigation.
Yeah, that's great.
MSU Extension has extensive resources in terms of turf management and how to, how to be water thrifty.
Yeah.
And, but to answer Tim's question, I mean, the water's everywhere, so why do I have to pay extra for it? It's, well.
Well, water is, but treated water that flows through our pipes is a limited resource.
So.
And it's drinking water.
Yeah, potable. Go ahead Jackie.
It just occurred to me, again, I'm trying to think about it from a user perspective. If there are opportunities to, to draw parallels between this proposed pricing structure and, and the pricing structure for light and power, that might help with the familiarity and, and the transition. I don't know if light and power does a, a ready-to-serv or the equivalent in their industry. But, you know, that might be a, a part of our messaging.
And their, their rate structure is a lot more complex, like kudos to them for having all the information that they have, because they, they tailor it like to the industry, then they have a lot more information on the customers that they're serving. They have so many different rates. If, if they understand the TCLP pricing structure, this is gonna be a walk in the park. Because even though it's a change from what we're currently doing, it is much less complex than, than TCLP. It's not, and I think that rightfully so, they have a lot more factors to consider in their pricing. But I think if we, if we looped in TCLP, it would add in factors that we're, we're not currently having to touch right, at all right now. Just from what I've seen from their bills, and they've even stratified further since we've separated. So they're, they're very, very stratified, but our customers with that level of understanding, it would make it more complex. And to draw parallels though, I'm, I'm not sure what other utility we could draw parallels with. The, the townships currently use the same method primarily that we do, but they use the old method. So I want, the townships are basically using the method that we're using, and they're like the only ones that I've ever, like I went through fifty of them. Nobody else is using this method. And try to find comparable areas, we talked about this in the last one. There's not any, anybody that I've found so far that does anything like what we're doing right now. They have that ready-to-serv fee, they charge for consumption, starting at the, at the very beginning of consumption. And so I'm, I can compare it to other entities, but without having familiarity with that entity, I feel like you're just learning more.
It feeds the purpose. Thank you.
Yeah. The other thing about conservation is now that they can see their usage real, every six-hour updates in fifteen-minute increments, they are able to make an informed decision on, okay, my toilet looks like it's running. How much water did that use? Like the fifteen hundred dollars, like how much did that use? You can see that where before you couldn't see what's happening. And we can look at that with the customer. Right now, we're, we're saying, okay, I'm seeing on my screen, it looks like you used it between twelve and one. Did you, did, did something turn off at midnight? Or like, we're kind of postulating, they can look at it themselves. They don't have to call us during our operating hours. It really is a customer empowerment tool all around, but also for conservation. You can see, how much did that use when I watered my lawn? What just happened to my usage? I didn't expect to use that much, or, or I could be using the opposite way that you, you wanted to use more. But truthfully, I think that it's gonna be, that people are gonna be more mindful of their usage once they have access to it.
Okay, any final questions? This will be brought back to us as, with the feedback we've gotten, but if we, as far as we didn't get super into the shut-off notices. So if anybody has ideas or thoughts on what's already been proposed, or something like to extrapolate on that we didn't get into tonight, please feel free to email Liz and she'll, and or Liz and Johnna, but make sure that Liz gets it and we'll get that passed along and, and see, see what you all put together with that. So that's appreciated. And thank you, this has been two very comprehensive study sessions to get us where we need to be, and I'm sure that somewhere. And I'm sure that somewhere at some point, somebody's gonna have the task of putting this all into a one sheet, and I wish them luck. But, but that's appreciated that you've done this for us, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yes, we can. We'll take a quick two-minute break, and then we'll come back and discuss our ethics ordinance and policy.
Thank you.
All right, we'll call this meeting back to session, and we'll start with our discussion of ethics and ordinance policy. It is almost nine o'clock, so I'm gonna ask people to kind of respect this, we don't wanna be here all night. I don't think any, any of us do. Not that this conversation has to be limited to just tonight on this issue. But I, we have had a request, and our attorney Lauren Tribblelout has been looking into our ethics ordinance and policy, so I'm gonna hand it over to her to kind of kick this off, and then we'll get into kind of, we've got a pretty broad discussion, so we'll get into some of that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So this is something that has come up before, a couple of times even since I've been here, and it has sort of stalled out. So I just wanna make a couple of comments as we get into the conversation. And really what I want, what I hope for tonight is that we can have kind of just a broad conversation, and I, I'm gonna listen and try to hear what the commission's goals are, what you would like to see, what you, what you don't wanna see. And then hopefully I can get some direction from that and absorb what you're trying to go for in this discussion, and then either bring something back to you or then know exactly how you want to move forward with this discussion. So I'm excited to hear what your conversation is gonna be. So I had some feedback from several commissioners that an ethics ordinance might be, individually came to me and said, you know, an ethics ordinance is something you'd like to explore. So I did a pretty deep dive into ethics ordinances within the state of Michigan. And what I really discovered is that they're very individualized to the community. So I think that's one thing to sort of keep in mind as we're discussing this, is that it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. In order to be really effective, an ethics, ethics ordinance really has to target what that community is seeking to see and, or not see. So it's something that is important to have a community discussion about as elected officials, and then also bring the community into that discussion and understand what the goal of the ordinance is, and then move from there. It's not something that's like a top-down type of a structure. Another thing that I think I mentioned when the paper called me, it's important to think of this as a shield and not a sword. An ethics ordinance is something that is, that is put in place to protect the community and not something that is used for individuals to use as a sword against one another. So just something to kind of keep in mind as we move forward the conversation. Ethics ordinances can come about in different ways. Sometimes a charter requires an ethics ordinance or, or says something about ethics in the charter itself. Our charter doesn't really have that component to it, it could. But it's not, the charter's not a place for a lot of fine detail. So if you wanna get into the nuts and bolts of, you know, enforcement and how that process might work and things like that, you don't wanna have a six-page ethics section in a charter. It's very inflexible, and it's, it's, that's just not the place to do it. If you wanted to have a component in the charter, I would suggest having something that says similar to what we have currently for our police and fire departments. The city shall have an ethics ordinance, and it shall address, you know, maybe three things. Or, and it shall apply to these different groups or, you know, these types of categories. But not an entire sort of ethics ordinance and policy and procedure all within, in the charter. That's, that just doesn't make sense, that's not the, the place for it. And so that's something that could be initiated, the city commission could initiate that. If you're interested in that type of a component to the conversation, that's why I'm putting that out there. It's important to have a conversation about who is covered by an ethics ordinance. And I will say that I recommend that it would be a universal type of coverage. It would apply to elected, appointed, volunteers, employees, being mindful of, you know, union contracts and disciplinary requirements that are required in an employment context. So we have to take that into consideration. But it's much more meaningful if it applies to all. So that is something that I found researching this area. I have to say, you know, this conversation has sort of maybe grown in this instance out of a, you know, one instance that has come about. It has been my experience that one set of facts can kind of drive a conversation, but it is much more effective to think about a holistic approach to, to the situation. So I guess that is to say that I wouldn't want you to limit your conversation to a lens of just one thing that you're trying to avoid or cover. I would want you to take a, a step back and look at the broad scope of what ethics could be, and, you know, look at what maybe could have been avoided in the past, but also look in the future. Many other things can occur, and you wanna be very all-encompassing and not just sort of narrow your scope to what you're thinking of. Because there's, there's a very broad, and I'm sorry to give you so much homework, but the guidebook was just so well-done that I thought, you know, I just have to pass this along, because I'm, I can't recreate this in any kind of manner that would compare. And you can see from the guidebook, there's just a huge range of things that can fall under an ethics ordinance. So it's sort of a menu to look at and think, you know, what do we need? What do we want? What do we don't want? And, and go from there. But I do wanna say that I think a holistic approach to the topic, and really philosophically, most topics, leads to better public policy, so just kind of keep that in mind. I think when we're, when, also when we're thinking of this, we have to think of discretion. We all have discretion, all the folks up here have discretion. We don't want you not to have discretion, we don't want staff to not have discretion. Think of putting guardrails up so that we can kind of have guardrails for the discretion that needs to exist in the, like, within the system. And then with that comes, you know, consequences for violations of an ordinance, and that's a whole nother range and scope that is very broad. And I kind of tried to list that out and call attention to it, and there's a whole section of, of the guidebook that addresses that as well. Some ethics ordinances and policies have no enforcement mechanism. And that's, that's maybe what's the good fit for that community that has adopted those, and maybe that is a good fit for our community, or maybe not. So there's some conversation that needs to happen, because there's a scope from no consequences to violation to, you know, misdemeanor consequences, and then how that would play out procedurally. So those are all kind of really important details that I just kind of wanna have an open dialogue with the whole commission about and hear you, your thoughts on those, and then, you know, we can talk about a path forward. And I, I suggested a path of, you know, I can listen to you and bring you back an ordinance draft to, to pick apart and use, and go from there. It can be an ad hoc approach, and I'm happy to kind of be a, a support for that ad hoc. I've been missing my ad hocks since the marijuana. It's like a void in my life. And, and we have Mary Grover here, who is, we're just lucky to have Mary in our community. I don't know if folks know Mary, but this is her, I mean, she's an expert in this conversation. And she is, I called her up and she was kind of like, hey, yeah, that sounds fun, which is, you know. So we're, we're really lucky to have that support too, and, and if you would like for Mary to be involved and, and, you know, we can tag-team it, or however the commission wants to move forward, that's kind of where I'm, what I'm asking for your guidance on. So with that, I guess I'll just kind of open it up and go from there.
Yeah, I just wanted to add two things to that as we procedurally go forward with tonight, opening it up. As Lauren did say that she proposed that we can, we could have a lot of consensus tonight, and she could go make a policy and bring it back, or an ad hoc committee to get into finer detail. And I say that so that people don't worry that if they wanna get into some finer detail tonight, and it is, bearing in mind that it is nine o'clock, that this will not necessarily, this will not be, no matter what, the last time we have this conversation. And we can get grant, very granular, but I, I want us to be very mindful of the time and the place. And so looking for that and your feedback as well of, you know, how we're moving this conversation along, where we wanna land. It is a study session, so even if we wanna make ad hoc, we cannot make a motion for that tonight, but that could be added to a future agenda very easily and under our, you know, we're all very familiar with our appointments and, and section of our, our agendas. So just wanted to set that table very clearly for everybody as we start this conversation. So Lauren gave us some highlighted portions, if we wanna start there, of elements of an ornament, ordinance. I don't know if people wanna start, start there, because probably makes sense to figure out what we want in the essence before we figure out the penalties. So if anybody has any thoughts immediately, let's kick it off. Go ahead, Jackie.
Well, and too, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you, if you think, no, an ordinance is not the way, you know, I, I want something different, I want, I'd like to hear that too, so that I know kind of where everybody's at, and we can go from there.
Yeah.
I actually want all of the above. I, I'm coming down in the camp of, yes, have this cover all members of our municipal organization. I noticed in the, in the handbook that even sometimes spouses, children, relatives, domestic partners are covered by the policy. So, you know, that's to be determined. But I think that a city charter that has a very broad policy-oriented scope, supplemented by an ordinance that gets into more of the, the nitty-gritty in terms of, you know, what do we enforce, how do we enforce it, and what are the consequences, would be a really meaningful but flexible way to approach it. So that, that's where I stand right now.
Were there any, and you don't have to have an answer, were there any highlighted things that you wanted to say?
Sure.
Yeah.
I, I thought that the idea that ethics need to be grounded in, in our fiduciary responsibility to the community, I thought that was a really powerful idea. And the principle of fair treatment, I, and civility, you know, being a really important. If it was important enough to be mentioned in the state constitution, I think it deserves a spot in our ethics policy. I think that, you know, pointing out that the, the end goal of all of this is to promote and earn public trust. I mean, that, that's why, one of the really important reasons that we do this is so that the community and its leadership can have a foundational understanding of right and wrong, and that we can build trust upon that. So I'm, I'm, I'm interested in that aspect of it. I, I think that the, an ad hoc committee to work together on the, on, on this subject would be a great first step. If Mary was willing to be the facilitator, wow, we would be very lucky. And, and I, but I do think that the choice of who participates in that ad hoc is important. I think that obviously we need commission representation, appointee representation, and community representation. So those were, that, that's kind of it.
Okay, great. Let me make it note real quick to myself. Did anybody else have any ideas that they were looking for off the top of their heads right now? I appreciate that you did give us some details, but very broad, so that leaves us a lot of room to have conversations, so. Go ahead, Heather.
I'll support all that Jackie has said, a universal ordnance, a universal.
Application, all encompassing.
Yeah. Something very broad in the charter, charter with the ordinance backing it up, and an ad hoc that represents across the citizens, as well as elected officials and staff, with Mary Grove participating if she'd like to. This, this ethics handbook is absolutely fabulous, and, you know, it's a menu. It looks like a lot of these different municipalities have kind of cut and paste and made it, made their own from just looking at this. So I, I don't see, well, you know, change the wording so you don't get into ethical difficulties with like.
Platterism.
Exactly, but, you know, Rochester Hills, they had a lot of great ideas, and I think that we could put something together fairly quickly that would be all encompassing.
Great. Did we have other general thoughts from commissioners? One question I would ask, and I ask this out of, really out of fairness to all of our citizens, is you both have said that you want the citizens represented, and I know our ad hocks can be anemically attended, which could raise the question more of when we host then, this conversation versus the composite of the ad hoc. But I am curious what that citizen appointment would look like. Is it whoever can be available, like, are the citizens that are gonna have the most voice on there? Be people who can meet at, you know, 1:00 PM on a Wednesday? Or, and that's, you know, that qualifies them like we do for our boards? Or are we talking about having, you know, a commission-based one that would meet in the evenings or something, where there could be more engagement from the citizens as a whole? I'm asking that because I, I hear the, I hear and agree with everybody saying we want a lot of in, public input on this, but I do worry by the nature of an ad hoc and, and appointments that were inherently going to be limiting the scope then, even though every meeting is public. I'm gonna say first, may Stanley raise your hand, but I see you too, Jackie.
I, thank you for raising that, those questions, and thank you Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Shaw for, I think, laying out in very, you know, clear but broad and clear terms what. clear terms what makes sense for a, an ordinance with, you know, backing in the charter. I, I hesitate to put too much detail into the charter for the reasons that you outlined, that, you know, that getting overly specific there aside from the fact that we need it. But going, thinking about the timing of the ad hocks, in the past, we had discussed trying to have ad hoc meetings in the hour or two hours prior to city commission meetings because most of, most of city, the city commissioners Monday evenings are kind of, you know, committed already anyway. That, and then I feel, I think that conversation kind of faded out, and maybe it was with the election of a new commission. But if we are interested in being most accessible to most people, is that a conversation that we could revisit, it like, particularly around something like this, that the community has indicated such a high level of interest in, I think it could be worthwhile to be working, you know, at, you know, at 5:00 PM or later, if possible.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a really good idea. I, I mean, I think we could definitely schedule these to be sort of right before, on Monday nights before the meeting.
Well, and I think, I would just throw in, I think Monday nights before the meeting is a good throw, but our citizens have a lot of different schedules, and this is so important that maybe it is not a one standing time, but it's agreed upon by the ad hoc of, there might be a 1:00 PM because that's when some people can make it. It could be a 6:00 PM on another night and, and other, so that we're in, somebody who, you know, for someone like us who has an obligation every Monday night, will never be able to come, even though in this case, it's our obligation as part of it.
Would that impact, though, potentially quorum, like, if we're doing two different times?
Oh, no, I'm not saying, sorry, not saying two different times in like a week, but like, the ad hoc this week is meeting on Monday at 6:00 PM, the ad hocks meeting in two weeks at, on a Wednesday at 1:00 PM, agreed upon and scheduled and making it known. So, Jackie, go ahead. I know you had your hand up.
I, I would think that the critical factor is who's around the table, more than when is the table occupied, and that the schedule should be, should be based on those people who are chosen to participate in the ad hoc, that that's a, you know, what they, what they bring to the discussion is much more critical in my mind than having a fixed meeting time. Maybe, maybe we learned, was there anything learned about this from the cannabis ad hoc?
Yes. And I think that what I would say, though, to the, that I learned from the cannabis ad hoc is we had a lot of active people who showed up and participated as audience, as not committee members, because that was just city commissioners, who would come in and give comments and give feedback. And so, I think that's, that's why I hesitate. It's not that I don't think that citizens should be engaged in it. I hesitate in singling out personally, and this is, I'm sharing this for the common discussion, not saying it's absolute, certain, certain citizens get to be part of that conversation at the head of the table, and others, you know, we're not, we never discourage people from coming from a public meeting, but that gives their voices weight over a citizen that might come in and say something at the podium, as opposed to all citizens having the equal weight, and the commissioners doing what we do, which is kind of forming policy from information. That's what I took from some of the cannabis. We, we had experts come in, so much like Ms. Grover, having Lauren at it, and kind of fine tuning, and even sometimes on demand. I remember when Brian McGillivray was still the chair of the cannabis, I think, did you replace him, Tim, or were you on then too? I can't remember.
Oh, I think I replaced Michelle Howard.
Oh, that's right, that's right. It was, it was a many moving pieces.
Yeah.
But I, you know, there would be times where in the room, we could have somebody bring something up, and Lauren could say, okay, I'm going to write that down, and I'm going to check on that, or actually, we can't do that because it violates X part of the law, or he likes, you know, this amendment right or something. So, it was very nice to have the full conversation with Lauren.
Can I just make a, like, a suggestion in that vein, too? It may be an item for the ad hoc itself to take up, how to handle public outreach. So, and that's just, take that for what you want.
Yeah. So, go ahead, Tim.
And I think, based on what I'm hearing you say, Mayor, my question to the city clerk and city attorney then is, typically, most of our ad hocks are three members of this body.
Mm-hmm.
Is that through ordinance or charter that that's how we structure it? I mean, I agree with what's being said, though, like, it's, might be a better structure to keep that and then work on public outreach, as opposed to try to form an ad hoc, and this is, I guess this is the question, could an ad hoc be formed that say had seven members, three members here, make Mary Grover an official member against her will?
Lauren would be staff.
You try to make Mary do something against her will.
Lauren would be staff.
And three members of the public, and then we have to have interviews and decide who from the public gets maybe more, like, to, I think what I was hearing more say than everybody else in the public.
The, the structure could be really however you'd like. I mean, it's truly, and you could even have more than three city commissioners on there if you wanted to. It's not limited.
Oh, I thought we could do that because of quorum.
But if it's posted as a public meeting, it doesn't make a difference at the end of the day.
Well, and.
But anyhow, I appreciate what you were saying, and I, I am supportive of sticking to, maybe it's more than three, but members of this body as the official ad hoc.
Right. What I would, what, and I think, and I appreciate you raising this, Jackie, because I think a lot about, when I was thinking about this, I was thinking a lot about the cannabis discussions, both of them, over four years, which I hope, and I know this will not take that long, but I have a little PTSD. But we did have just three commissioners, but we had very regular, especially as we got closer to creating ordinances, check-ins with the city commissioners, so the commission at large could then weigh in and bring it back to the commission. I think in your case and what we're talking about, and kind of what I was going for, but I think you've kind of, you both, you and Tim have both kind of dialed in and better, is maybe the ad hoc meets at, like, my suggested, a, you know, 5:30 on Mondays before, and it's standing, but maybe this ad hoc in particular does some more public outreach. They host a afternoon conversation for an hour at the senior center. They are available at, you know, the alluvian at 5:00 PM on a Thursday, you know, so that there is not just two public meeting opportunities, but also some general feedback opportunities to, to get some, some more input like you're, you're looking for. Go ahead.
Lauren.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Lauren, thank you.
I, I was just going to say that because we're looking at such a broad scope of, of folks impacted by this, I'm, my inclination is to make sure that they're, they're represented from beginning to end in the conversations.
And I, you know, I'll, I guess I'll say that that's my hesitancy, is that we're exalting a couple of voices above others, even though everybody's open. And then my question would be, if we did do that, because it applies to it, would we then include non-Loren staff people on it, because this affects them as well? So, would it be looking at a couple of department heads, a couple of citizens? And then I do feel, I don't, I feel like I've seen that happen, and we've seen it with some other groups where it comes together, that that has, I've had people tell me that deters them from coming sometimes because there's six, seven people talking, they all have their own interests, and then they show up and feel like their voice doesn't matter. So, that's just some public feedback that I've had. It's just one of the perspectives here. I, I go back to the cannabis example that I think, although ultimately took a bit of time, it wasn't, by the way, four years total for everybody who didn't participate. We did a medical, and then we paused, and then we picked up the recreational as soon as it was made legal. So, it, it was, I thought it was a good example of us doing it as an ad hoc, but tons of participation and lots of feedback and very real-time responses to some of the things that were being brought up. And, and again, this is where we're at, and we're having this conversation. I would just get into fears about whose voices are weighed in what ways and how they're selected, because then you're selecting it by, by definition, you're selecting it by another small group of the body as a whole, for another small group of the body of the population. Go ahead, Mitch.
Yeah, and my comment is kind of going off of that, in that one of the things that can be covered by an ethics policy is the amount of transparency about how people do get appointed to various boards. So.
Yeah. I, I think the, you know.
I mean, yes, it does make sense to have members of the public and members of currently appointed boards on that, but it opens a can of worms about who ends up getting selected because we can be a city of 15,000 people, and yes, only a small subset of those people would be interested and able to serve on something like this. But still, who gets chosen represents but a small subset of the total breadth of thought and perspective.
Mm-hmm. Not, to set that aside for a minute, we're not done with it, but to set that aside for a minute, did other people have other suggestions for what they wanted this to look like? Not just an ad hoc in general, what this conversation, they want it to look like, some things that they think need to be emphasized, or how that might be handled?
Well, I think, sorry. Hi.
Hi. It's okay.
That, you know, I think we need to, the ordinance, I would hope for something that has some robust penalties associated with it, and also process for how those penalties are meted out. Because, you know, we have, currently, we have charter provisions about, you know, what, what a city commissioner shall and shall not do, and that it is a, it is a misdemeanor offense to violate this provision. And there's absolutely no information about how to go about investigating that. Does the city attorney have to launch an investigation into one of her bosses? To whom does that get referred? So, I think both the penalty piece and the process for assessing that needs to be in, in the ordinance itself.
And I, I would join, that's a good point, because I would join in also saying that because of the structures that the city commissioners, everything that applies to city commissioners and city attorney and city manager have special instructions because obviously anything brought against them is going to be by a subordinate or someone who in theory would be in charge of it. So, you know, we've seen this of Lauren's usually our legal go-to, but if it's any of us or anybody at that position, you know, who's our, who's our outsider that we hand it to so that the city's finger isn't on the scale, things like that. And so, that is part of the procedural talk, but that's where I just wanted to highlight that there might be rules for some, then different rules for the other, but not because of exclusionary or, you know, or lifting up people above rules. It's that it doesn't make sense that, let's say the chief had to investigate something, that it could be his boss, or his boss's bosses, and that's not a great way for us to investigate. So, keeping things partitioned. Go ahead.
I, I think an independent body of some kind would need to be established in terms of, of enforcement. And I, I really liked, within the handbook, the, the model that set up a spectrum between aspirational and accountable, and where aspirational is just self-policing and having, having the best of intentions, and the accountable had, was much more tangible in terms of enforcement. And, and my preference is that we lean toward the accountable.
Definitely. That's great.
Although, I, I think it could be a combination of both. They did say in there that there were some that were a combination of both. I like that idea.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Aspirational leaning towards, more heavily towards accountable, I think is how you put it. So, not, not discounting the aspirational. I appreciate that. So, we've gotten some notes here on, on how we would like to look at this. It seems that we're maybe leaning towards an ad hoc to get into it, using maybe Ms. Grover and the MML handbook as a, a guidepost there. I, I think that would be all of these that are policy committees. We don't do a luck of the draw, so that will be a volunteer basis. So, knowing that this is a lot, a lot of work's going to go into this. All right. And then, and Jackie's interested, I'm interested as well. So, but we can, we can't vote on it tonight, so this will come back to us for some action. And I guess I would say to the public, as we're going forward this conversation, again, to remind people, there's no vote tonight. When it comes back, it might just be an ad hoc vote. This is a much bigger conversation. I think everybody's very committed to having, and a lot of the materials, go ahead, Commissioner Stanley.
Oh, no.
Oh, I was just going to say, a lot of the materials are out there, and highly recommend everybody read the MML one if they want to get involved in the conversation. But go ahead.
So, well, and I, I, we can come back to this, but I, I do want to note that the city attorney's memo does make mention of the request to review this arising out of the discussion, the contract with Millennium Digital Consulting. And there have been some elements that have been widely reported about how that came into place that are factually incorrect, but we have not been able to address them because those details were discussed in closed session. I do think, you know, these are, these two things are linked to some degree, and while I know we can't vote on things, but I'm curious if this body still feels as though the discussion about Millennium Digital that we had, I think it was last, late last summer, early fall, in closed session, needs to remain privileged. And if not, I would like to be able to discuss what was, some of what was shared in that meeting.
Okay. That would take a motion, and that would be something we'd have, would it?
It could be by consensus. Yeah, it can be by consensus.
Oh, okay.
If this body wants to waive that and have that discussion publicly, you can. And I, you know, I did put that at the end of the memo, that that's something also that I would appreciate having direction from the city commission on in light of the decision of the prosecutor. So, if you want me to do something or not do something going forward in, with that information, I need to hear that from you so that I know what your expectations are.
Okay. We all in favor of that being more open?
Yeah.
Okay. Head nodding? Any objection? Let me say that. Nope. So, okay, I think that is a consensus there that we'd like that information publicly available. Was there any other general or more specific issue that somebody wanted to raise? I would say that whatever motion gets brought forward to us, and I say this for staff to create the packet later, would be the establishment of the ad hoc, and perhaps also within that the parameters of check-ins expected. Inasmuch as, we're starting off very broad. I don't want any of the commissioners to feel like we're meeting for, you know, the ad hoc meets for three months, or four months, or five months, and they don't feel like they're getting some, you know, feedback and responses, because at the end of the day, this is our whole body. It is everybody's input. The ad hoc just allows us to go granular a little bit. So, you know, I, whether it's periodic check-ins, you know, bi-monthly, whatever, we, I'd like to see maybe something like that in there also so that the public knows that, that there will be updates at the general city commission meetings, too.
Well, we have our report section.
We do have our report section. You know what? Thank you. I'm still adapting to that. That is absolutely perfect. We'll have reports from the ad hoc included as relevant and as frequently as possible.
A totally speculative question, but I'm, I'm wondering, among the people who are involved here, do you have a, an expectation of when we might be able to achieve a full code of ethics for consideration for adoption?
I mean, the.
Is it worthy of, of setting a, a timing goal to say, we want to have something in place in 12 months, or six months, or, I mean?
Well, one of, one of my thoughts is, and please feel free, but ad hocks expire after six months, so I think the ad hoc could get the work done. If we want something on the, you know, the first low-hanging fruit might be writing that charter amendment, because if we want that on the ballot for 2025, the language needs to be ready to go by early August, so everything, right, isn't, early August, so everything can get eyes out of T's check, or eyes out of T's checked, T's crossed.
And then we have six months, right there.
And then, yeah, and, and so that's, that, you know, and if we need a little bit more time, we'll come back, but hopefully everybody will feel informed enough. There'll be, that'll leave some time for public outreach as, as well. But I think that'll be a good goal.
I just wanted to point out, if you're wanting to have a charter provision proposed by the city commission on the November 2025 ballot, I'd suggest doing that sometime no later than May. In May.
Oh, okay. That'll be one of the, that'll be the first first step.
It doesn't mean the full ethics ordinance, but a charter provision.
Which, yes.
This is the shortest piece, probably.
Okay. And I, and as was laid out by Lauren in the memo, and I think as she discussed here, it can be very, the city shall have an ethics policy that covers elected and unelected people, blah, blah, blah. So, I say that to people that we might get the, that might get churned out pretty quick. It doesn't mean that's the end of it as well, as people are following this journey. So, is everybody feeling good about that? Is there anything else anybody would like to add some input on at this time? Okay. Well, I think that's great. I appreciate that. I wasn't sure how granular we'd get, so I was ready for a longer conversation, but it is going to be a longer conversation. It's going to be months, in a good way. So, I, did you have any, Commissioner Stanley?
So, can I share now the piece that I think needs to be addressed publicly from that session?
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So, in the closed session regarding when Liz introduced us, excuse me, when the city manager introduced us to Millennium Digital, it was shared at that time in closed session that she had a prior, she had previous professional and personal relationship with the principal. That was all, she would also disclose that staff was made aware of that prior professional and personal relationship, and we were offered the opportunity to ask questions as a commission, and we did not. So, if there is accountability about this at this point, I want, I think it's, we're also, also important to note that city commission, the city manager did not violate any existing policy or laws, but But if there's accountability that needs to be had, we had the opportunity to ask questions at that time and we did not. So this, I'm glad that the any ordinance that we're going to put in place also covers the city commission itself because we, we were satisfied that the person that was being tapped was the person who needed to, that was available to us and was doing a great job during a crisis situation for the city. So I think that's, that was the, the piece that has been misidentified was that there was no disclosure. There was disclosure, it was in closed session.
Thank you for that, we've got that opened. And any other comments at this time on anything about this? All right, I would say we're going into a conversation that I'm very excited we're having actually after Lauren mentioned that she's had this brought up, I think we've had it brought up, whether it was from, as I mentioned, I think I got quoted, Richard Lewis, you know, sitting out one and letting me, when his son-in-law was up for reappointment, that wasn't required, but, you know, that's one of those things that we're going to look at. So I would also say that this, this ethics policy is going to be about how we proceed in a open and forthright way. It's also about, I think as mentioned, some, some aspirational as well. So I, I think we have to remember that we're also part of a small community and that at some point, we all know every, everyone. So what does, what degree does that look like? What rights of privacy do our family members and friends have, as well as what rights do the public have? And so that'll be all part of these conversations going forward, and I think it'll be a very good discussion. So I look forward to having that with everybody, thank you. All right, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to Mary Grover.
Yes.
For coming and listening and bearing with us and hopefully for moving forward with us on this topic. It's much appreciated.
Go ahead, Mary. Oh, that's okay.
Did you say I could?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, please approach.
You've mentioned the cannabis discussion a number of times. Was there ever an assessment about that process, what worked well, what didn't work well?
No, it's a good idea though. No, there was discussion at the commission level when all the, when the reports were brought in, but I don't think there was actually a sat, sit-down analysis of.
Like a post-mortem.
Right, a post-mortem if you will, yeah.
This could be another discussion or a side discussion. I was just curious about that.
Yeah.
You all remember it.
A couple of us do. A couple of us went through that. And I will say, yes, thank you, Mary. And I will say as part of that, because we were talking about the composite potentially of an ad hoc. Lauren was at every one of those meetings, chief was at most of those once we started getting into the policy. It was, I just pointed over there, but it was not our chief, the current chief at the time, I'm just so used to it. And then we would bring in experts as needed as well on certain issues. So I think we, we have a history through ad hoc like that of having non-commission members still be part of, you know, brought forth as, in their expertise as part of discussions as well. So there's, there's definitely room for that. So with that then, I will end this conversation and then I will open up public comment. And this is about anything tonight or anything in general, so thank you for your patience if you were waiting in general.
Good evening, Fred Bimber, 1223 Randolph Street, city resident. I'm encouraged by what you've discussed this evening about an ethics policy and formulating it. I will just offer my own personal thoughts as to how you might go about establishing the ad hoc committee to deal with it. Those city commission members who are interested enough and willing to put in additional time to make this happen, I think should comprise the committee. Invite others to comment, to participate simply by way of expressing their ideas. You're clearly going to need a series of meetings. Make them as transparent and as well-advertised as possible. Invite public comment to those meetings. Written comment, emailed comment is probably best. Post it publicly, all of it. Make it, it's not an agenda packet, but it is a public comment section posted at the city website showing what other community members have commented on as a way of formulating that policy. Make everything as transparent as possible. Invite city employees, department heads, but they're commenting ultimately, the committee consisting of city commissioners, somewhere between three and seven, will have to make the decisions on what's being formulated as the charter provision in the ordinance for this. Make public comment as robust as possible. I comment publicly, verbally at meetings because that's the only way anybody watching these meetings is going to see it. If I send in a letter or an email to the city commission, it goes into a black hole and nobody else ever hears about it. Make these meetings well-publicized, invite the press, encourage them to come. Let's make this transparent if we're going to establish an ethics policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bimber. Any other public comment on anything under the sun?
Or the moon.
Or the moon. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the city commission. Any final comments from commissioners, since we don't have the official portion today on the agenda? All right, well, with that, I would just add and not, I agree with Mr. Bimber's comments that we can be more robust, this is a huge issue about how we put it out there. But just to remind folks that every posted meeting, every ad hoc, everything, the press is always welcome at, the public is always welcome at. I completely agree, this is a big issue, we want to get a lot of feedback, but I don't want people to have the mistaken idea that other ad hocs are not open to press or public as well. But with that, and I think we have had a lot of talk about transparency and big discussions with this, and I think we will definitely be doing that in, in the most robust way we can. But with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Everybody have a wonderful rest of their evening out there.